I'm standing in front of the wrong place.
Yes. Stephanie, do we have Mark and Lydia on the phone?
Yeah, connecting.
Yeah, we're here.
Great.
Hi, Lydia.
Hi.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, it's 5:30. Everybody ready? Good evening and welcome to the September 27th City Council meeting for purposes of our special meetings for budget hearings. We've got, before we go any further, we've got Council members Lydia Sephedosan and Mark Copeng appearing telephonically. Would you like to both say hello? Lydia, can you hear us?
Yeah, hello.
Hi there. And then Councilmember Copeng.
Yes, I truly appreciate Thomas and the IT team making it possible for me to attend the meeting tonight. Looking forward to another informative meeting. Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we've got quite a number of presentations, first of which, we've got the Honorable Dave Larson here as the presiding judge in our municipal court to lead us off with the Federal Municipal Court Budget Presentation. Your Honor?
Thank you, Your Honor, and other members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the budget. I want to introduce a couple folks before we begin. Sue White's the court administrator, and then Marta is from Valley Cities who works with our community court folks. And then we have Mark, who's a volunteer with Community Court, and then a Community Court participant Heather and her daughter Janie, okay? So, thank you for being here. This thing is... There you go. So, I'm going to outline what we're going to talk about tonight. The requests we have are relatively nominal. We want some seed money, some actually pilot project money for a community court, and then we've had some increase in security costs that we need to address. And then we want to talk about some other challenges that don't relate directly to our budget, but things that you need to be probably aware of. I want to talk about Community Court. It's something we're very proud of. It's been in operation now over six months. We've had our successes and failures. We started out small. We started with no funding whatsoever. We didn't come to the council and ask for any money. And for what, for that, that reality, we've done quite a bit, and it's a tribute to our staff and to people like Marta and other folks at Valley Cities who've stepped up very, and to offer their services at our court. They're there every week at no charge to the city, to be care coordinators for folks that come in at Community Court. What I want to do is show you a community court that's well-funded, and that's Spokane. And just, I just learned today also that Peleup just got a $200,000 grant for their community court. But Spokane is award-winning. They've gotten, they've also got the MacArthur Grants for other aspects of their criminal justice system. But I just want to play this video for you all, so you can give a flavor.
Every Monday morning, dozens of people line up outside the downtown Spokane Library, but they're not really here to check out books.
I'm following, and you can make your phone.
Jamie Scamola is making his last appearance here in Community Court, a place where people who have committed nonviolent offenses while living on and off the street can get some help.
These service providers already existed in the city. And what Community Court does is it puts them all in one spot, so that they don't have to run all over town in order to access those same services.
Defendants have to report to court once a week and continue to stay out of trouble for six months. Police credit Community Court with reducing quality of life crimes in the downtown area.
The resource area, we just have to reach out for them initially, and so if you don't want it, you're going to need it, basically.
Community Court is designed to slow down the revolving door to our jail, where locking people up even for minor crimes costs us $130 a day, and time behind bars usually doesn't fix the problem if you're homeless.
So, what Community Court does is we actually make them work harder here than they're made to do by sitting on a jail sentence.
As a condition of avoiding jail time, defendants have to complete their community service and accept help with the issues that put them on the street in the first place.
Thanks, Thomas.
So, let me sign off on your dismissal.
So, Community Court is more about solving problems than punishing people. And if defendants can jump through a half-year of therapeutic hoops, they get to graduate.
The work that you have done demonstrates to me that you have the ability to dream for something better than where you're at right now.
Scamola is now one of 400 people who have graduated from Community Court. His name on one of the leaves that have sprouted from this victory tree.
And what's next for you?
Success. So, I just got to keep going.
Congratulations, and then you're a leaf on our tree.
And now, Community Court is expanding its operations to the northeast Spokane Community Center. It's a chance to improve quality of life issues for the people who live and work in and around Hilliard.
So, what it does is that, what Community Court does is help people stabilize and stay crime-free, and that's one of the things, it's one of the biggest impediments to getting people successful and getting in homes. The kind of the catch-22 we're in, we're not big enough to kind of bring in all those services, yet we can't get big enough unless we bring in all those services. And so, what we're asking for is just a $5,000 allocation, so we can do a pilot project to actually have evaluations on site, to bring people on site, to try to incorporate more of that as a demonstration, so when we, because we do want to aggressively pursue those grants, so that we can expand Community Court. So, that's the thing we need there. Security contract is just increased cost for the security company. It's a $1.13 an hour increase that amounts to about $7,000 a year. So, it's not something that we really have a choice on. Security is important. We have a statutory obligation to keep weapons out of the court. And I want to thank Mayor Farrell in particular, and Deputy Mayor Honda, and the other council members that were on the council, and Councilmember Duke, Loz, and Moore. When we really invested down there in the court on security with an X-ray machine, we rival some superior courts. So, it's very much appreciated, and that is a need we have. The other thing I wanted to talk about is some challenges, some court decisions and some amendments to statutes that really affect our ability to collect. And we're not in the revenue business. We adjudicate cases. But there's a state versus Blazina, and then last year, House Bill 1783 severely limited the ability of the court to assess fines. We've had kind of been a kind of user-pay system in our state. This isn't just our court, it's all across the state, where fees and costs and assessments are used to pay different aspects of, depending on the type, depending on the cost that's paid, it pays different funds. And for instance, just because we don't charge a $43 conviction fee, doesn't mean the city loses 43, because we only get a fraction of that 43. But it still impacts our ability to collect costs from indigent defendants, to even charge them, not just, let alone collect them. One of the things we're not allowed to do is collect interest anymore in criminal cases, and it's been an average of about $51,000 a year. And I don't think, Sue, that's not segregated, that's civil and criminal, the $51,000. So, that hasn't been segregated. So, that's just one example of the, of the kind of impacts. And so, the thing I, the thing I'm talking about here, about opportunity, I mentioned to a day, that it's an opportunity to try to work with the Washington Association of Counties, Association of Washington Cities, and Administrative Office of the Courts, to try to go to legislature and work out a solution for the way we funded courts for decades or for a long, long time, to kind of offset some of those losses. There's been a fund created for some of this, but not for all of it. And Judge Robert, the advantage this year too is Judge Robertson is a, is the president of the District Administrative Court Judges Association, and she carries a lot of weight in terms of that particular issue, and she's motivated to try to, try to see where she can help in that area. But it's an opportunity, if we work together, to try to shore up some of those weaknesses in how we fund courts in the state. Next thing I want to talk about is public defense. I'm not sure what's going to happen this year. The mayor's office controls that. The court, for obvious reason, doesn't control who the public defender is, and certainly we're invited for input, but the mayor's office chooses the public defender. But I, it's going to be just with inflation and everything else, it's going to be an increased cost. I'm not sure if that's been discussed in the budget. But the other thing Judge Robertson and I, the input we want to have is that if we invest, and it is an investment, then the, in the proper amount of funding for that, the public defenders' office, which are basically private law firms, have a better chance of keeping qualified people long-term, because we've, we've had our, the public defenders essentially swiped under front or our nose in our city, because they are able to get higher-paying jobs elsewhere. So, that is something I, it's just food for thought. We, Judge Robertson and I certainly can't specifically advocate for anything on that. The other thing is within the, with the SCORE transition, it's an opportunity to kind of really look at, and I'm very grateful to Chief Wong and other people in the police department who have, over the years, been committed to jail alternatives with subsidies and things of that nature. And, but we, the court has been committed to jail alternatives for quite some time, and we really are aggressive about that in terms of trying to get people there. Part of the problem is when we make people pay for it, a lot of defendants, because they can't afford it, will choose jail instead of going on jail alternatives. So, one of the things we're suggesting is we need to kind of really look as a city as to whether or not we see these jail alternative vendors as another jail. In other words, Kent, Yakima, and whatever EHM provider as another vendor for detention services. So, if we end up paying, the city ends up paying $14 a day for EHM for somebody that's eligible for it, that that's a lot less than the X amount, whatever you're paying per day to a, to a city for a jail. So, just start thinking in those terms, so that if you, so that if there's payment of those services, that ultimately it could increase participation, which then decreases ADP, and increase compliance, because if a defendant gets to a point where they can't afford to pay, then they don't, they get out of compliance, and then they might end up in jail. The other, the last thing I want to talk about is, one of the things that, and Mayor Farrell, I'd want to thank him also for listening to Judge Robertson, I'm meeting with us, and I very much appreciate that, some of these issues. But we want to make sure that when we transition to SCORE, when we start bringing 15 to 20 prisoners into the, into the city hall every day, into courtroom three, that we keep them separated from the public. And we're going to have transport officers, and that's very much appreciated, but the idea is for them to be able to focus on the people that they bring from the jails and not on trying to keep them from the public. In the past, when we did those calendars, there'd be a lot of the public that just walk over and start talking to defendants and start, and those kind of things. And it's just not, not conducive to proper security or anything else. And so, very grateful to John Hutton and Steve Eichardt for, they're already looking into the costs, and Mayor Farrell also appreciates that support, looking into the cost of having to make those improvements. And we're not looking, we don't need to make it Fort Worth. We just need, or excuse me, Fort Knox. We just need to make it Fort Worth either. But, but we just need to make it so that we don't have folks intermingling, an opportunity for either people to escape or people to come over and, actually, for the security of some of the prisoners. So, if there's a domestic violence case where somebody's angry, they come over and start attacking the person that's in custody. So, we don't need any of that. So, are there any questions?
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I raised my hand. Before we had SCORE, we had prisoners coming in for court. Did you not have a back room, where they, the back of the courtroom where they would sit?
Yeah, but nothing separated. The way it'd work is they have, we have two holding cells, and so if we have one female prisoner and 15 male prisoners, and the police know more about this, they manage their, the holding cells. We got to keep them in holding cells, so some of them are kept in holding cells, some come to court, and they're in there. So, and the officers did a good job of managing how many people were in, in the courtroom. But we didn't have any place where defendants sat other than in the courtroom. Right now, we have transports, where we bring people from King County Jail, and so the attorneys will meet with them in one courtroom, and then the transport officers will bring into the courtroom we're handling. But, but there's still, there's no barrier. There's no barrier keeping in those other courtrooms to keep them, other than keeping the courtroom locked. But, but we have to have some kind of separation when we're, when we're there. I think the prosecutors, the public defenders, everybody agrees that that is a prudent thing and prudent thing to do. I also want to be able to have the courtroom be used, so that basically, if you could have a door separating, you could open the door, and you can still use the courtroom for other things. But when we're in session, that a door is closed, and there'd be a partition. You can imagine a partition, if you look to the left, the benches to the left, there'd be a partition coming from that wall up to the front, and then the prisoners and everything would be over to the right of the screen.
I just got to say, there's no, there's no substitute for the safety of everybody involved, and even for the prisoners. I mean, sometimes, you know, from my experience, like when I was training young, young attorneys to appear in court, you know, these are very emotional hearings in which people are dealing with the reading of a probable cause statement and hearing it for the first time, or there's decisions made about no contact orders, and they can be very emotional, understandably, situations. We need to, I, you have a commitment from, from my office, and I'm sure the council as well, to make sure that everybody that operates in a municipal court does so in a safe manner. And that's, and that's just something that, that we, you know, we owe it to everybody that works there, and everybody who comes into contact with our court. Deputy Mayor?
I have one more question.
Yeah.
But I certainly agree with you, whatever.
I was going to add on to what you said, though, Mayor. The, a lot of folks think it's traffic court, and it, to a degree, it is. I mean, we have misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors, but we have people in there with murder convictions and robbery convictions and all kinds of felony convictions that come to our court. They may be arrested this time on a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor. But, but there are people that are dangerous, and also people, as you've indicated, that have been harmed by them, that may have a motive to harm them. Mayor, or Deputy Mayor?
For the community court, have you applied for any grants yet?
No, because we wanted to get it up and running, have it run for six months, show granters that, or grant providers that it's a viable system, that it's working. And then we've just, I just spoke to Valley Cities a couple weeks ago, and then spoke to them again today at their ribbon-cutting about getting that process rolling.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Judge Larson, for being here tonight. I definitely want to first say that I'm really proud that you're our judge, and that you've been involved with the Federal Youth Action Team in attending those community meetings, so really appreciate that. And being a board member for the Youth Action Team, really appreciate seeing you there as a judge. I think that's pretty unique, and so going above and beyond your job, so I really appreciate that. I did want to ask, in terms of the community court, what are some of the performance metrics that you utilize now in seeing some of the folks go into job training and helping with the community? Because I do think it's an opportunity to strengthen our system at a different level, but I want to kind of just hear some of the metrics that you're utilizing right now.
Well, they're the, obviously, keeping somebody crime-free, so they're not committing crimes, because that's the, the impact that it has on the community. And so, the, we've had a couple people that have failed and have committed crimes since, being on Community Court, but for the most part, people stay crime-free. And the, that's, and we have not, what we do different than other courts, and in some community courts, they gave it, you know, as soon as you're in treatment, your case is dismissed. And then the people just, it's just back to, back to ground zero. They, they don't have any impetus anymore. Other courts are, have these artificial six-month periods, like they mentioned Spokane's six months. We're going to make sure people are successful, and we don't, we have not had anybody graduate yet, because we're going to make people successful on a long-term basis. If we had time, I'd just have Ms. Gallagher just come up and tell you her experience, if you wanted to hear from her directly. But she's an example of a exemplar success story, and fully-employed, stable housing, where she's lived in a tent before, with her 10-year-old daughter and her husband. The, serving the community, volunteering already in the community, and in Kent at, the other group I forgot to mention is New Connections, from Kent. They've, they come to our court every week also. But those are the, the type of metrics you're talking about are what we're looking at. But we've not had anybody graduate yet, but we've had a lot of people stay in compliance. But we've also had some people fail.
And just a quick follow-up. In terms of funding, have you looked into SURF or CDBG funds for it? Because I think that's being used in some other parts of the region, but I'm not sure if we've already looked into that.
No, because I'm not a grant expert. I was on the Human Services Commission, but that's been 14 years ago, so I forgot everything I knew then. But the, but no, I'm hoping that we have some folks. In fact, Valley Cities, today, they have a grant writer, and, and we're going to lean on, we know the judge well in Peleup, and the judges in Spokane, they can help us along. But I've, I've never really been a grant writer, so I don't know anything about, about any of that. And Sue's going to have to learn pretty quick, so.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I mean, I think community court judge is a really valuable thing. I've heard a lot of great things in our community about it, and I think that they're a real asset to the community, quite frankly, and in our society as well. I actually would like, if it's okay with the mayor and my colleagues, to hear Ms. Gallagher's, if that's what, is that her, her story? Because I think that just strengthens what you're trying to do with the courtrooms, and I think that's important for the public to hear, but I don't.
Sure, yeah.
It's up to you.
Well, let me, let me say one thing before, come on up, Heather, but let me say one thing before you speak, is that you said that I'm, I don't know if you said I'm an asset, but I'm just, I'm just a guy up there that believes in this. The people, Heather, the people that are successful, those folks, the prosecutors, who's 100%, 150% buy-in on this, the public defenders, who 100 and 150% buy-in, those folks are the things that make it work. I just get to have the joy of coming in and saying, "How you doing?", and "I'm glad you're doing well." So, the credit belongs to people like Heather.
Oh, absolutely, and the volunteers of, of the, of the court, the community courts. But it certainly lives up to the image and what we all know so well, that it truly takes a village to really make everybody successful.
Before you speak, okay, just Judge Larson, I've written a lot of grants in my day, so I'd be happy to work with your grant writer.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you.
All right, Heather?
My name's Heather Gallagher. I'm a 45-year-old mother of four. I, in December, my mother passed away, and so I went out and did some, something really stupid. I stole from Macy's. I got caught, and I was an addict. I was using methamphetamines. And after my mom passed away, and after getting caught and everything, I chose to turn my life around. And when we were homeless, living in the car, I had my 11-year-old daughter living in a car, living in a tent. We lived at Saltwater State Park in Dash Point for like four months. And to endure that, but then going to court and speaking to the judge, and having the community come together, having peers, having the judge come off the bench and sit with you face-to-face, and shaking your hand, and having that, that blanket to say, "You're going to be okay", has helped me tremendously. I've, I've, I've come from a broken home all my life, all my life. And to just know that I have a sense of family or support through Community Court with Judge Larson and the prosecutor Karama, all these people, it's helped me with the passion to know that I am somebody, that I'm going to make it, the fact that they push me along and they don't belittle me, they don't, you know, anything. And they've helped me in other ways, finding outreaches like Shelley Pauls. Shelley Pauls is a wonderful person in my life. I have other people that are helping me with my daughter. She's, has disabilities, and it's just been a tremendous success for me. I have a full-time job. I was going to Valley Cities, you know, they've been a tremendous help. It is, it's been amazing. It's, if you knew me from before and seeing me now, you would, you'd be amazed of the transformation that I've gone through. And I can say that I owe it to myself, but I owe, I do owe it to the community court for helping me along.
Heather, thank you so much for coming today. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
To show you how the community comes together, when Heather's very concerned about Janie living in a tent at 10 years old, and she needed to be in a more stable atmosphere, so people banded together and got her on Alaska Airlines, got her down to Dallas, to where her extended family is. One of the Alaska Airlines employees flew a red-eye with her to get her there and got her back, after, you know, when things were more stable. So, that's, that's a pretty special day in community, as far as I'm concerned. So, those are the kind of things you can do when you're not operating in a punitive atmosphere, where you operate in a therapeutic, try to get to the root cause rather than just treating symptoms all the time. So, Heather is, again, somebody that gets me up in the morning and lets me put my head on the pillow at night.
We're lucky to have you there, Your Honor. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, just to kind of close up, Ms. Gallagher, thank you so much for your story and your heartfelt story and all that you've gone through. And it's, I think it's the reason why I do what I do up here, and I think it's the reason that we do what we all do up here. You know, we want to see success. We want to see people better in their lives and living up to their dreams, you know, because I think that's what life's all about, you know, chasing those dreams. And I think that can indeed become a reality. So, thank you for sharing your story. I appreciate that.
I want to make it known to my daughter that it's for her to live a better life than what I have to take this experience that I've gone through and say, "You know what? We've already done that. Let's move forward." And she could, she can move on and be somebody better, but I chose to do my own. So, this is what I, I did.
And it's great, it's great that you're modeling that as well, because I think that too many times we don't see that in parenting, and sometimes we do. And that's a very powerful thing that you've done, to set that new pace in your family. And I think it's very powerful. And Judge, you know, certainly, I appreciate the fact that you're saying it's not you that's doing all this, it's a community of people doing this, but it takes one person to make that change and to have that vision. So, I would just want to thank you for your leadership, for you always being so genuine and authentic. So, thank you for your leadership.
Appreciate it. I'm not going to let you leave it that I did it, because the prosecutor, we made it very collaborative, so I'm not going to take 100% credit for it. I just, again, I get the joy of being involved. I don't know if you know or not, some of you do, that I was recommended to the White House for an appointment to the federal bench. I didn't get selected, but the closer it got to that, that point, the more I didn't want it, especially with what's going on now, because it would have been the same committee. But the point is, is I'd be deprived of the opportunity to do this work if I was there. So, thank you. I'm just glad that I'm here.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, can I add one thing?
Yeah, please, Lydia. Councilmember Sephedosan?
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you, Judge Larson, for everything that you did for our community. And I would like for you to touch a little bit on the jury thing that you've been talking about, the diversity, and if there's a budgetary need, is that something?
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Councilmember, and I think Councilmember Johnson, I don't think that, Councilmember Johnson's kind of been on the, in the loop too. We were, we had, we were part of a survey back in 2016, 17, whenever it was, and we came out towards the bottom in terms of our representation priorities on our jury pools. Now, it's all random. We don't, you know, discriminate based on anything other than who shows up and who answers the questionnaires. So, we, I formed a jury diversity committee, and then Lawrence Garrett was on that and very brilliantly suggested that we include the diversity commission, and that became part of the work group, and you, that you approved last year to have the diversity commission involved in, with the court and trying to get that minority participation up. We were also struggling with getting jurors to show up. We were, sometimes we weren't having enough jurors to do two trials. And so, essentially, what we did is we developed a strategy. We had three op-eds. They were spaced out along, in, in time. But within a short period of time after the first op-ed, whether it's a cause and effect, I don't know, we had, we doubled the size of our jury pool. And I went in to take a verdict for, because Judge Protem handled a trial, and so I went and took the verdict, because it was the next day, and she was gone. And I looked at the, at the jury, and five of the six jurors were people of color. And so, whether it's making a difference yet, I don't know, but we've decided, and we haven't done it yet, we're going to... we haven't done it yet, we're gonna decide to poll, to do the same survey when we get jurors coming in to see if it's made a difference. And then we're not done, we're gonna continue to try to, our next steps, and we haven't got there yet, our next steps is to do reach out in the, in the different parts of the community, to make sure people understand the importance of jury duty. So, I'm pretty proud of the diversity commission and your counsel for approving that as part of the work group and the efforts they put in. We were also at the, with Flavor and Taste, I got it mixed up, Flavor of Federal Way, we had a booth there, and we had a judge from Superior Court, a judge from, can't remember where, but we had people from the Minority and Justice Commission, staff members come down to, come up to Federal Way and participate, and, and so we've done that, too. Didn't, we did it with no money. So, we're very frugal, and I'm proud that we've done, we've turned back money every year, except last year, I think. So, we very tried to run that court very lean and mean, and we did it with no money.
Well, we're proud of your efforts, Your Honor.
Thank you. And thank you, but again, thank you to all the people on Diversity Commission and.
We got it. We got it. All right. Anything else?
Counsel, any last?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, the next presentation is economic development. We've got Tim Johnson. One thing we're gonna do, as Tim's making his way up here, I've got one pink sheet, which is from Scott Chase, and we also have Rich Shockley in the back of the room, which I believe, oh, we've got a couple. We've got Dana, and so, okay. One of the things I want to do is, our council meeting, our budget session went to 9:30 or 9:40 last night, and a lot of the folks had to, a lot of the folks had to wait till, all the commenters had to wait till 9:40 last night, or 9:30 last night to talk. So, rest assured, Scott, you're not gonna have to wait till 9:30, you as well, Rich. So, what I'd like to do is intersperse our public comments around the time that it relates to the topics that they want to address.
Good idea.
Yeah, so, I was gonna do it like right off the bat, but I think, let's, let's put them right around the time that the presentations are being made. With that, Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Following presentation contains very dry information, so viewer discretion is advised. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, this was mayor and council approved, this budget recommendation was approved by the LTAC last month, so it comes to you with committee approval. That's our mission statement, those are our accomplishments, I won't bother spending a lot of time on them. You know that the significant amount of effort that went into the NC2A application, as well as the 2020 Olympic trial application. Unfortunately, I believe that there was graft and corruption involved in the Olympic application. Indianapolis has got it for three years, I can't prove it, but I can tell you that there was no better application than Federal Ways, and it shows in our community and the way that we present ourselves. And pending the announcement by the NC2As of holding the women's and women's swimming and diving championships for 2020 and 2021, and potentially 2022 here. That will fill every hotel room between Seattle and Tacoma. So, congratulations on that one. When the announcement comes out, I'll make sure that we're all there at the press conference. We hosted, as you know, three major events this year, along with the Pac-12 Men and Women's Swimming and Diving Championships. It's a tremendous effort that goes on here in our community. Our achievements for 2019 and 2020, you know, here's what we're doing. We're gonna play what Atlanta did to Indianapolis in 2016. We're gonna, we're gonna host, we're gonna, we're making it outside of the Olympic process. We're pending a proposal. Mike Dunwitty, myself, Ralph Morton of the Seattle Sports Commission are going to make an overture to, to the main committee, not USA Diving or USA Swimming, to host a training camp here in 2020 before the athletes go to Tokyo. That's what Atlanta did before they went to Rio, it was a real success story. They had more people than they ever did at the trials, so I think that that's a real opportunity. We've got money in the, in the budget again for another, another digital sign board, I think those are really successful. We have a program with C-Tech International for welcome advertisement, we used it successfully this last year. Just gonna continue to move through this. So, wrong way, just quickly want to show you the relevance to the revenue. You can see in 2015, that spike was caused by the PGA Championship at Chambers Bay, then it kind of dropped off, we've come back up again relative to it. Now, 2018 could go above $250,000. It very well might, but Ade and I, our finance director, Ade Aruwila and I, looked at that and just said, "Look, you know, we know what a stable cost is gonna be, and that's what we expect it to go from." This is what the budget then subsequently will look like in 2019 at 241. There's your breakdown of what you've got. Now, this is the important element, I want to get right to it. Budget forward. The hotelers working with the city, and Mayor, you were there for the signing with the governor, you had a passage of legislation for the approval of Tourism Promotion Agency in 2015. And the hotelers supported that, they got it changed, and then there was change amongst hotelers, general managers, stuff like that. So, it fell backwards. As I was trying, if you recall, I was just getting here, and I was trying to get up on the learning curve to get this taken care of and done. They came back and they put it together. You will have a full city staff report that will come through your committees. It's preliminarily already kind of gone through LTAC, but what is required is for Ade Aruwila, myself, Ryan Call, our city attorney, and Jean Stanley, our human resources director, have been working together on this, but we will be bringing later this spring, through the council committee processes, this process for your review and hopefully subsequent approval. But what it does is that the hotelers are going to be charging $2 for every hotel room occupied, and that is an estimation of between $400,000 to $500,000 in its first year out. And this money will be used to help promote Federal Way and be able to bring two positions, professional and administrative staff positions to us. And you will oversee that budget, you will oversee that work program, but we will be bringing, hopefully, to you in the spring of 2019, a full staff report for your review and examination, and you can take all the time you want to go through it so we get it right. But I'm looking at $400,000 to $500,000 for that. That concludes my presentation on LTAC. Do you have any questions?
We'll do questions at the end.
Pardon me, sir?
Go ahead and go through the whole thing, we'll do questions at the end.
Okay, you want me to go on to economic development?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Economic development, there's our mission statement. These are accomplishments associated with categories of business and retention and recruitment, the branding initiative, which I think have been very successful since we netted particularly the taglines and building other sub-taglines as it relates to that. We focused specifically on significant update on content management of our website. If you have not seen the new rollout of the website, you haven't been to economic development or business services, I direct you there, it's very significant in that context of that university initiatives moving forward, downtown and town center projects are moving forward. And the other, and one of the key elements that happened during the course of the year was obviously the approval by the federal government of our opportunity zone, which is significant in the context of investment. We do have a project that will be making a submission, our first opportunity zone application, so I think it's, it's, we're headed the right direction. I want to bring to your attention, though, the stakeholder relations. This is only about 50% of what I deal with on a monthly basis. I mean, you notice that none of the utilities are on there at all. I spend a considerable amount of time with, with those folks as it relates to development, but I think that's important for the community to see. Achievements moving forward will be significant in continuing the categories of what we've identified specifically, and our continued effort with Rich Shockley at the Small Business Assistance Program at Highline College. It's a, it's an excellent program, and it really, really did a yeoman's job this year with several businesses that we had, and we're much obliged to that. As you know, one of the other things that we continue to do, and we'll be repetitive in that, will be our work with the Foreign Council Association of Washington, bankers and financial institutions, and the property owners. We have meetings with the mayor on those, and have been very successful in enhancing and improving our image in the region of the Puget Sound. Within the context of that, there's the budget. It's not much, but I want to give you just a quick few of that. It's mostly personnel, it's kind of sad because that personnel is basically me. In the context of services, that provides a set aside for the Small Business Development Center, and supplies are just pretty much what they are. However, the budget going forward, I will tell you that I do work on that sincerely, and will provide about 30% of the existing, over and above the existing budget through work that I do to raise more money and funds through grants and sponsorships. So, the total future budget should be, and what Ade has asked me to do, again, Ade Aruwila, our finance director is asking me to do, that we include that in the budget moving forward, and you adopt that, $360,973. I want to just conclude by saying one thing. I talked to the mayor, and last week, my phone just blew up. And it blew up because we have been doing, I think, a yeoman's job in economic development, and I'm not here to be arrogant and egotistical or narcissistic. We're doing what we need to do individually and collectively, and we're doing a very good job, and we have built a tremendous image for this community, that that's the reason why we're seeing what I consider to be an incredible amount of investment and development and business growth in our community, and the pipeline is absolutely chocked full. The dilemma that we have is, is that we don't have enough building inspectors and plan checkers to get the job done. We're actually losing revenue, and what scares me is the very image that all of us have worked on collectively, to make this the great city that it is, could be impacted by the fact that we can't process those quick enough. And I'll be honest with you, if there is no reason, if we can't get those processed, then there's no reason for economic development. It's hard to say. I've racked my brain on this, I mean, I'm older than most of you, and, and I've got a lot of experience in big cities, and I've looked at this and looked at this and had, Frank, an open conversation with the mayor. He knows what I'm talking about, and I believe that if we can do that, it wasn't all that long ago that we could say that we could process a permit between six to 11 weeks, and people were just saying, "Wow, Federal Way is top dog. This is the reason why we need to make our investment here." And I don't think we're there now. We've got three, Brian will talk about it, and I'll let him discuss this, but I think it's really, really important that we do this for the health and well-being of Federal Way. So, I'm not, don't, please don't ask me any questions about asking for increased staff, because I'll figure it out for you as we get, continue going on. But right now, there's a higher priority right now, and that priority is to get these wonderful projects that, when the mayor and I go out and recruit business, and he's an excellent salesman for this community, when we do that, we need to make sure that we can get those processed so that we can get the jobs and the tax base and the other economic impacts manifested into our budget and into our community. That's my presentation.
All right, thank you, Tim. Counselor Moore?
Thank you so much. Tim, I've gotten to know you quite well over the last three, well, five years, actually. And I appreciate every little ounce and sweat that you put into the City of Federal Way. I think it's, it's phenomenal. I think, you know, we all did, and Jim did a good job, the mayor did a good job of choosing you to be the economic development director. I, I will say that having met with Brian, and I appreciate his time, and I'm looking forward to your budget report later, but I would completely concur that there's, apparently there's a need for building inspectors and planners, specifically to essentially do what you just talked about, and I would thoroughly support that. But having watched how much time you spend here, you know, to my colleagues, and I know that you're gonna dispute this, and that's okay, and I respect that, but to my colleagues, I think, I've heard some of my colleagues mention that the need for an additional staff member in the economic development department. And so, I think it's a conversation that we need to have at some point during this budget process, but I would completely concur with Tim Johnson, and after having met with Brian, I know they're doing a lot of system improvements in terms of efficiencies, and, and I know they, his staff has been getting trained on Kaizen, which is only a positive, I think, but at the same time, you're still gonna need some sort of employees, whether it be in the building inspectors or planners, to process the work that the mayor and economic development director is doing, because I think it makes us look bad when people are having to wait for such a long time to get a permit processed. And I think in the business community, I think there are some concerns, but I'll discuss that later when we, when we hear about the community development department budget. Thank you.
Counselor Duke.
Well, I just want to add to that. I think, you know, we do have reserve accounts, and we might need to look at spending some money to make some money. And looking at staffing issues, I think is another issue, but I really think we do have reserve accounts, and we should be looking at that, and, and that's why it's also important to look at how we can bring more revenue into the city. And I hope someday we'll be able to get a meeting going again for that committee and to try to bring some recommendations here. But we need more revenue in this city.
All right. Counsel, anything else? All right, thank you, Tim. We'll talk about community development when community development gets its presentation. Rich, actually, before law, let's have Rich Shockley come up for public comment. Rich?
And also, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. We've got Karen Schwisson with Three Trees Yoga. And Rich, please?
Mayor, thank you for bumping us ahead in the schedule, I appreciate that. Counsel's heard enough from me, but tonight I invited a business that we've worked with for a number of years, just to share how they have worked with us, and so I'd like to introduce Karen, one of the owners of Three Trees Yoga.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. We have been in business, Three Trees Yoga, since 2005 here in Federal Way, and from the very beginning, we have turned to the SBDC for help in how to run our business well. And we often said in the first few years, we'd look at each other, the three of us, and say, "We've come a long way from downward-facing dog." I mean, we opened our studio because we love yoga, and there was no place in Federal Way to practice at a dedicated studio and healing arts center. And we were ready to do that, but there was so much that we didn't know. And so, we were able to turn to the SBDC to give us the help that we needed to thrive. And now, we have over 30 part-time employees working at our studio. A couple of years after we opened, we wanted to decide, should we buy the building that we were leasing? And again, we turned to the SBDC for help there, and how to package our business in such a way that banks would be interested in us. And they helped us to do that. We had three different banks to choose from, and they helped us figure out which is the right one. And now, there are seven businesses that operate out of the building that we own, and they're synergistic. We work together. Since then, we opened, we began a career school, a yoga teacher training career school that's registered in the state of Washington, and we graduate about 25 teachers every year. Those people now have ways to make money and bring in income that they didn't have before, and to do what they love in this community. We also eventually had to figure out what to do with all these talented people that we were graduating. We didn't have enough room in our studio for them. Should we open a second location? We get, we turned to the SBDC for that as well, helping us to figure out what makes the most financial sense. And we ended up, no, not opening another location, but starting another LLC and taking these talented teachers and bringing them to corporations and hospitals in this area. We started something called Work Well Northwest. And I think it's important to recognize that the SBDC, they support we small businesses who live and, and work and raise our kids in this environment here, and that it's more than just dollars and cents, we also contribute to this community. We partner with Parks and Rec, we partnered with Friends of Hailobos, we partner with a multi-service center, we've taught classes at St. Francis to help the employees there combat burnout, we offer free classes to vets with PTSD. Is that for me?
It is.
Okay.
You can go ahead and finish your thought.
So, I guess my point is that when you're making these really difficult decisions, to not be so short-sighted, hopefully, and cut money for the things that support the small. small businesses that support the city and maybe ways that aren't so obvious. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Rich, as well. And congratulations on your success with your business, Karen. All right. All right, now, moving on to law. Ryan Call, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. I'm here to present the law department budget, obviously. The first slide I have here is our organization chart. We have 13 full-time employees, well, FTEs. Some of those are split up here, as you see, in the criminal prosecution section. I am the city attorney. I have working for me directly a lead paralegal, who is Tanya Proctor, and then I have a deputy city attorney, Mark Orthman, who you all know, and then Eric Rhodes is in the audience. He's our assistant city attorney. There's also one legal assistant, Melissa Clemens, working in the civil side that support the civil attorneys. So, the civil section is basically in charge for all legal advice for the city. We've split up the city in, basically, we all have clients, we call them, by department. So, we all have principal points of contact in each department that we handle any legal questions that they may have, and then I also fulfill that function for council. Sometimes Mark also fills in for me to answer council questions, as you are all well aware. The criminal prosecution section is larger. We have four prosecutors total. The chief prosecutor is Jennifer Castleton, and then we have two kind of all-purpose city prosecutors and one domestic violence prosecutor who is dedicated to just DV cases. Supporting the domestic violence prosecutor is a DV advocate who basically helps victims of domestic violence get through the court process. It can be very daunting sometimes, and a lot of the people in that position are very vulnerable. So, she's been working in this position for a very long time, and she's very skilled at her job. The criminal prosecution section is also supported by a lead paralegal and two women who share a legal assistant job, and then one of the legal assistants also doubles as DV support. So, that's the administrative support that we see here, .5. You see over here, there's a risk management bubble. The law department is responsible for processing claims for the city and assessing risk and interfacing with our insurance companies. We do not currently have a dedicated risk manager, which is fairly uncommon for a city that is not a part of an insurance pool and is our size, but we, basically, we had that service when we were part of WCIA, and part of the downturn during the recession was that function was taken out. It used to be actually in another department. It wasn't in law. We've taken it in-house at law. So, what that means is we don't have someone who is like the rate gross for emergency services. Risk manager would be someone that goes around and looks at the city's operations and policies and procedures, and also analyzes losses after the fact to figure out if there's better practices to prevent future loss. That's not a function that we currently do. So, our risk management is basically, we process claims and interface with the insurance company and try to get the best possible outcome after the fact on claims. Tanya Proctor is our lead point of contact for claims processing. She's recovered $150,000 this last year in losses for the city. Just, I wanted to go over a little bit about our workload. I know that's been a theme with a lot of the departments, that there's a lot of understaffed departments in the city. I cannot say that the law department is anywhere near as in bad a shape as some of the other departments. We are not. We have enough people to get by and get the job done. We did lose one civil attorney in, I believe, 2009, maybe 2010, as part of the recession downsizing. And with that loss, what we did lose was a lot of our ability to be proactive and to look forward to fix processes and to study things that are not acute problems right now. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is we've become much more reactive without that extra civil attorney. We basically handle the problems that are before us, and we're getting that job done, but lawyers like to be able to think and ponder future problems, and that is not a luxury that we really have right now. That said, I do think we have adequate staffing to get the job done. I do not believe we could get by with less, and I'm thankful that we're not talking about cutting any of our attorneys or support staff. I will also say the prosecution section, basically, if someone's on vacation, then no one's allowed to be sick, is kind of the situation over there. So, but they do get the job done. Here are the numbers for the budget, our actual and proposed for 2017 and 2018. We are not proposing any increases in the law budget besides cost of living and regular step adjustments, and those are those numbers there. There were, unlike some departments, we had a large turnover in our department in staffing, especially in the attorneys, in the last, I guess, three or four years. So, right now, there are two of us that have been here for about 10, well, we've been here 10 years. We just got our 10-year award. All of the other attorneys have been at the city for between, well, five and less. I don't think anyone has gotten five yet. So, we have a fairly recent turnover, and a lot of the prosecutors have turned over very recently. So, their job, their pay grades have been adjusted for market rate, or else we wouldn't have been able to fill those positions. So, as far as salaries go, I would say that the law department, as far as the lawyers go, the law department is being adequately compensated, in my opinion. The admin staff is in the same boat as the rest of the city staff. They have not had a good look at their salaries as far as the market goes for quite a while. Here is a breakdown of our expenditures. We, and I have a simple graph after this to kind of break it down. The theme here is that principally, our budget is salary for employees. In the budget book, I break it out a little bit into just the law section versus the risk fund, because the budget book mixes the risk fund and the operations costs of the law department together, so it's kind of hard to tell what is what. So, here, the actual total budget for just running the law department is what you see at the bottom right-hand corner, but the total budget for my department is about double that because of the risk fund. Some points of interest, we spend about, we budget $200,000 for contract attorney services. Those are attorneys we hire outside of our office for specialized legal advice, and we've had to use that a little bit more than we have in the past in this last year because of a lot of the unique legal issues that we've had recently. We've sought outside legal advice on several major decisions that the council's had to make, and as you well know, we've briefed you on that. The risk fund also, if you look at risk claims, general liability, that budget item is quite large. That includes an increase that started in 2017 of having enough money in the bank for two deductibles for, say, we have a major loss that exceeds our deductible, we'll be able to pay the deductible to our insurance company two times with that number. Our risk premiums have been pretty static. They did increase slightly between 17 and 18, but we've not heard anything from our insurance broker that they're going to increase for 19, so we're currently budgeting the same amount for 19. The training budget, lawyers are required to be, keep their education up. We have to report to the state bar every three years, I believe, our continuing education requirement, so we have to have a training budget to keep our attorneys licensed. And we also send our, one of our paralegals to a risk consortium occasionally. Office supplies are what they are. I think this number is including a lot of things that you wouldn't necessarily think of office supplies. We just kind of wanted to throw it in a group without breaking a bunch of smaller categories down, but they include books for the attorneys, postage, legal courier fees, access to LexisNexis, stuff like that. So, here's just a graph. I guess the point of this graph is to show that our budget is principally personnel costs, outside contract attorney's fees, and then that little sliver of operating costs is about, well, on average, $20,000, $22,000 to $23,000. We're asking to budget $22,602 for that this next year and keep the same contract attorney amount. I would like to point out, we do spend more than $200,000 on contract attorneys per year, but on those cases that are tied to a risk fund or a risk loss, we have been using the risk fund to pay for those attorney's fees, so those are included in the risk numbers. Some highlights from the past, you know, the law department, I don't need to go through each line of this, but the law department is basically involved with all of the other departments, just like HR or finance, maybe even a little bit more. We are involved with all of their processes. We're constantly advising all of the departments on their actions. As far as workload goes, just to give you appreciation for how many contracts we have to review, I think we split it out. It's about 177 contracts a year per civil attorney, and that's not really fair, because I don't do my fair share. That's mostly the other two attorneys doing that. We're also working on, we did renew one franchise agreement. We're working on the Comcast franchise this next year, and we also have several site leases that we're negotiating. Those go through our office right now, and that's what that is, is when we're actually renting out city property to cell phone companies to use our property for towers. The civil department had seven civil litigation cases in 17 and 18 that we defended. We are currently with the HR department and the police department, well, and the other departments that have unions negotiating three expiring agreements. There'll also be an agreement in 19, the Teamsters that we'll need to negotiate. The prosecutors handled approximately 3,300 cases. That's not an exact number. We recently went over to a new software system called JustWare that the court uses, and it's very efficient in a lot of ways and helps the court and the prosecutors be efficient in some ways, but we haven't quite worked out the metrics of it perfectly. So, that's an estimate that we have there. That number is somewhat down from the past, which is good. I would say that cases are taking, they're more labor-intensive now. We're very involved with the community court, as the judge just talked about, which is great, but it is more labor-intensive than some other forms of court. We've also participated with the police department to defend against asset forfeiture claims. We have currently 16 open asset forfeitures, including a few houses that we're working We're continuing to offer our assistance to staff on all of the many legal issues, the big ones being, as you're well aware, what to do with TC3, IRG, major litigation, and we will continue to prosecute all the misdemeanors that occur in Federal Way, non-juvenile. So, like I said, the only, there are no proposed changes, really. The only reason the budget is slightly higher is to account for COLA, as the mayor has proposed, and regular step increases for three employees. Do you have any questions?
All right. Counsel, any questions? All right, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, thank you for your presentation as well. The only question I really have is just around, I think it came up yesterday, as a city, we're trying to become more environmentally friendly, and I know, you know, probably HR and law is probably the most paper within any department, so maybe community development. I don't know. And so, is there any ways that we could save on that, or what are your thoughts around that?
You know, we are doing pretty good on that point. So, that JustWare program that we talked about has reduced, basically eliminated, paper for most of the criminal cases. So, we're doing basically no printing on the criminal side of the house. So, at this point, the only printing that we're really doing is if someone, like a civil attorney or someone wants to print a contract out just to write on it, but that's about it. So, we've gone largely paperless. Discovery is also being handled, for all the criminal cases, is being handled electronically. So, in the past, we'd print out a packet for every single case, and that's no longer the case.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
All right. Councilmember Sephardoson.
Thank you. So, I'll put up a slide, we have Prop 1, and it's a dollar figure that I'm showing to you. Can you explain to me what that is?
I'm not catching that.
Lydia, can you say that again, something about Prop 1?
Yeah, so, on one of the slides.
Yeah, slides?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I see. Are you asking, what does that mean?
What does it mean? Yeah, why is it in parentheses, and what does it mean? Yeah.
Okay.
Under salary and benefits.
Yeah.
Oh, one of our prosecutors, one of our prosecutors is funded by Prop 1, is that right?
So, yeah, so, we wanted to break out its color of money. Sorry, I got the wrong slide. Basically, we, Prop 1 currently funds 1.5 of our FTEs in the prosecution section.
Let's slow down. I want to, first of all, can you define color of money? What does that mean?
Color of money. So, a day calls them buckets. It's, and it's a, that we call them color of money in the federal government, but basically, some types of money are earmarked for only specific uses, and Prop 1 is one of those. So, Prop 1 was passed by the voters to be used very specifically and only for those uses, and one of those is criminal justice. So, we have 1.5 of our FTEs in prosecution are being funded by the Prop 1 money, and .5 of Eric Rhodes' salary is being funded by that, because he helps the police department.
It's a good question, Councilmember Sephardoson. Any follow-up to that?
No, thank you. Yeah. So, it's in parentheses, because that amount is coming out of the problem.
Yeah, that's the amount. So, it's, and it's not meant to be cumulative, so it's just a note. So, of the 1.5 million, 261,000 is Prop 1 money.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
So, with the salaries paid through Prop 1, do you have enough money from Prop 1 to pay the salaries that you need?
Well, so far, it's been, they just pay 1.5. So, whatever the salary is, we've been getting that money.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we've got the police presentation, and my plan actually is, following the police presentation, we've got one, two, three public comments. My plan is to do those public comments immediately after the police presentation, starting with Mr. Chase, since his, he noted that it's a police department-focused. So, with that, Chief Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. It's my pleasure to present to you the police department's 2019, 2020 proposed biannual budget. Before I get into the material, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce some of the key people from the police department. First, the furthest from me is Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter. He oversees the field operations division, which is the largest division within the police department, and he's one of the founding members, and we've worked together for many, many years now. Next to Deputy Chief is Diane Shines, and she was recently promoted to the position of civilian operations manager. That is the highest-ranking position for a civilian within the police department, so she oversees a lot of civilian staff within the police department. Next to her is Ms. Lynette Allen. She's the office manager for the police department. She reports directly to me, but she also provides service to the deputy chiefs, so there's some efficiency there. She oversees three chiefs. And then, next, we have Commander Tracy Grossnickel. He oversees the swing and night shift patrol section. And then, closest to me is Commander Chris Norman. He's also patrol commander, day shift, and a little international flavor with Commander Norman. He was actually a police officer with London Metropolitan Police Department. He started there, because he had a dual citizenship, so he brings a lot of perspective from England, but he's been a police officer for very- but he's been a police officer for a very, very long time. So we have really experienced command staff, and they provide exceptional leadership to our staff. This is our organizational chart showing our two divisions within the police department. We have total of 163 full-time equivalent positions within the police department. The professional standards section is overseen by Commander Kurt Schwan, and he reports to me on two things, and that is, one, professional standards. Matters that involve discipline, he reports directly to me on those matters, and matters relating to media, he reports directly to me. Otherwise, Commander Schwan reports directly to the deputy chief of the support services. And you all met Ms. Lynette Allen, she's the office manager, and she reports directly to me as well, and she oversees our animal service licensing section and keeps track of a lot of things. And then on the field operations side, this is where I mentioned that most of our people are assigned is a uniform side. We have 110 full-time equivalent positions in the operations side. So basically, everybody on this side wears a uniform when they come to work. So that's where the majority of our people are. Patrol services, we have 75 people assigned to just patrol services, and that's covering three shifts, day shift, swing shift, night shift, 24/7, 365 days a year. We don't, we don't take a break. So we're constantly operating there. And then our traffic unit. Traffic unit provides service with traffic safety education, enforcing traffic laws. They investigate accidents, any serious fatality accidents. We have specialized, trained traffic officers who will respond to those, and they oversee the red light photo enforcement program. And then we have our special operations unit, and that unit works on problem-oriented policing projects, and they will also augment patrol as well, but they work on special emphasis and projects that need to be worked on. And then we have our contracted police services. This is where we have our school resource officers. We partner with the school district. We have five officers assigned to the school. And then we also have three officers assigned to the Commons Mall on a contract. We contract with the mall. And then we have two animal services officers in patrol. Then we have our specialty teams, those are collateral assignments, and then we have our safe city program and neighborhood resource center. On the support side, the deputy chief, Neil, oversees 50 employees, and in this division, we have our criminal investigation side, our detectives. They work on persons and property crimes, special investigations unit, that's narcotics and vice, gang and criminal intel, and we're part of the valley investigative team. And on the administrative side, they help develop the budget, training, recruitment and hiring, internal investigations, CLIA, quartermaster, fleet and equipment, jail, volunteers. And then civilian operations manager oversees quite a number of people in this division as well, and she oversees the records unit, property and evidence, and then crime analyst prevention unit. So in the police department, we have seven sections, and normally commanders oversee a section within the police department. We have five commanders. In the past, we've had seven commanders. So over the years, we've reduced two, and that is really to have more officers out in the field. So some commanders oversee more than one section, and we're able to do that because the experience level of our command staff today. And then we have 19 working units, and the lieutenants oversee the work units. And we have total of 13 lieutenants, and over the years, we reduce one supervisory position at that level as well, again, to shift other work assignments. We have about 75,000 calls for service that come into our city on an annual basis. That's about 200 calls for service. And I would tell you that the biggest challenge for the police department is just managing the workload. Sometimes we get projects, requests from business owners about people loitering, trespassing. That's where the commanders go to work. They look at our operation and say, who is going to handle that? And they coordinate those efforts, but it's never-ending. We do, the biggest number of complaints that I get in my office, and sometimes every now and then you'll get an email about it, or somebody will contact you, but it's just based on maybe not responding to a call quick enough, or not, they're having problems with maybe homeless populations, so forth. You hear about it once in a while, but we deal with it on a daily basis. And that's, that's the challenge for us, is you might think we have 116, boy, that's a lot of people, but when you look at, if we were 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., we could probably eliminate about 60 people. But we got to work 24/7, and that's, a lot of our people are working swing shift, because that's, that is our busiest time, not daytime, but swing shift. And nighttime, obviously, it slows down, but there's less support staff during that time. So that would say A to Z, you know, people are constantly asking us for things, and then we're juggling our resources to try to, try to get things done. So 2017, 18 key accomplishments. We are very pleased to report that for both years, 17 and 18, we are going to have a crime reduction. So in 2017, our overall crime is down 10%, and in 2018, just for the first six months, we're down 17%. This trend is continuing preliminarily. The numbers have now been approved. Every month, it lags maybe two, three months behind, but we get certified numbers back. And once we do get that, but we're at, after eight months, we're about 14%, 14, 15% below last year. So we're doing well. I would tell you, crime is cyclical. It goes up and down for various reasons. We're doing a lot of good stuff, but we can't take, we're not taking the credit, because there's so many variables with crime. I also want to tell you one thing. Sometimes people go to websites and they look at rankings of cities of crime. That should be completely avoided. One of the reasons I want to tell you is that not every city reports the crime the same way. So if you really want to look at crime, you got to look at the agency year after year, and then did any reporting change within that agency? Because there are agencies, police agencies, for example, they won't take a theft report unless it's $1,500 or more. So I can tell you that if we took that direction, policy-wise, we would probably eliminate 95%, 99% of our theft reports. We would dramatically reduce our crime numbers, so we would never make the list for, you know, one of the highest crime city or something like that. So when you look at those numbers, please, and I'm reminding you, and I know I mentioned this before, it's not apples to apples. And some cities do that, it really comes down to resource. They just don't have the resource to go respond to every theft call. And we even incorporate our online reporting into our NiBIRS crime number. So, and not every agency is going to take those type of reports, online reports, and incorporate into their crime numbers. So we think it's better to try to measure the actual crime itself so that our crime analyst folks can see where the crime is occurring and deploy those resources, coordinate with patrol, and have more of an impact. So I wanted to share that with you, that if somebody talks about crime numbers and they're comparing, you got to be really careful, because not everybody's doing that. And when you go to other parts, other parts of the country, they're still using Unified Crime Report. They only report nine crimes to the FBI. NiBIRS requires us to report 26 crimes. So in those communities that are reporting nine crimes, of course, they're going to have lower crime numbers. So I just want to share that point with you. We maintain national accreditation rating with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, CLIA, and we met gold standard with excellence. I want to tell you how important this is for you as a policy group and also for our citizens. CLIA was established to increase police professionalism and accountability. CLIA establishes the best practices in the law enforcement field. Three and a half percent of law enforcement agencies in this country is nationally accredited. There are 18, about 18,000 law enforcement agencies. There's 321 police agencies in the state of Washington. Seven police organizations in this state is nationally accredited by CLIA. I can tell you that it's not easy, because if it was, there'd be a lot more agencies being nationally accredited. The process is rigorous. We have assessors who come to our agency, conduct audits, they look at the number of use of force, and we are below, way below, the national average when you look at the use of force that originates. Of all the law enforcement contacts, we're 1/10th of 1% results in use of force because we encounter resistance. So we're very low, very low number of citizen complaints for our organization. We get about 15 complaints or so, and over the last five years, we've had five use of excessive force complaints, one per year on average. So I wanted to kind of share that with you. We're very proud of it. CLIA is, serves as a foundation for a police organization. CLIA serves as a foundation and gives us substance. And we're not just saying we're a good department. CLIA is coming in, and their reputation is on the line when they tell you that the Federway Police Department is gold standard with excellence. They're putting their reputation on the line, and they're a credible organization. Monthly crime analysis, information distribution, implementation of directed patrol and operational plan. There's some sciences to what we do. Our crime analyst coordinator, she's running data all the time, and she comes into all supervisory meeting once a month. We have it with every supervisor, commanders, deputy chief, and myself. We do kind of like a comstat thing, and she's telling us where crime is occurring. And then, when she's done, we start strategizing about, okay, what are we going to do for the next month? And then everybody reports back to me the following month about what they did with their work unit. So there's some accountability within the police department, and we know that this is having a positive impact. If we identify a drug house, we don't let go of it until it's gone. So we identify a gang house, we work on it until we resolve the issue. And over time, I think our staff has done an exceptionally well job. Regional collaboration to address crimes such as drugs, gangs, gun violence. We're part of the regional DEA gang task force. That task force has 12 detectives. We have a detective signed to it, and they have a secret location here in Federway that they operate out of, and they're making a positive impact. And then gang and gun violence, we partner with the King County Prosecutor's Office, other South King County agencies. The mayor's been involved, I've been involved. We do collaborate, share information. We're constantly looking for ways, how can we impact this issue better? And even our gun-related crimes are down this year. Regional efforts in auto theft by participating in Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. We are deeply involved with the regional task force. It has agencies from King County and Pierce County. We are the grant agency for this task force. We manage, we're the fiscal agent. Commander Norman, who's here this evening, is the commander for this task force. And we have detectives from Washington State Patrol, we have detectives from Pierce County Sheriff's Department, Tacoma, and then we have detectives from various South King County agencies, and Commander Norman here oversees that task force. This year, through six months, we're looking at 21% reduction in auto theft. And that crime is really important because for a lot of people in our city, a vehicle is the biggest asset that they own, and having that stolen is devastating. So we recognize that, and we're hitting it hard. And that's one of the reasons we're investing Commander Norman, his expertise, being signed to the task force. So he's done a fabulous job. Crime analysts and prevention specialists, outreach to community, providing education and enhanced service, they make over 1,300 contacts. If there's a one unit that was building trust with our community, whether it's block watches, community events, you name it, safety fair, this unit of two people do a tremendous amount of work bridging that relationship, positive relationship, whether they're organizing coffee with the cop or what have you through Ms. Shines here. But very valuable unit. We expanded our safe city program. Currently, we have 69 cameras within the city. We received a quarter million dollar state funding grant. We're working with IT to add more cameras. We are working to add a video wall within the police department that when we're done, I think we'll be very pleased and proud of it, and love to have you come down and take a look at it when it's done. But it's a project that we're working on, and we know that we're going to be putting more cameras on the north end of our city with this, and also 21st and 336. So when it's all done, I'm not sure exactly how many more cameras, but it will enhance the safety and security for our community to have more cameras in our, in our community. Implemented a new department-wide electronic schedule system. Before, we used to just paper and a clipboard, but we're using an electronic system, and it's working out really well for us. Next, I wanted to, there's so many items I could bring up, but I just wanted, just a couple more. Our shopping cart program with our volunteers. They pick up about 2,000 shopping carts a year. They go out one day a week on Thursday, two, volunteer, just send your citizens from our community that just want to make a positive difference. And we have one person who does administrative work. But I also want to tell you, this is also a threat for the city, that we may need to invest money with addressing shopping cart issues, because unfortunately, these gentlemen are getting older, and this is manual labor. It's not fun, it's not easy. Some of the command staff members have gone out and just worked with them one day, just to experience what it's like. And I'm telling you, you come back, you're wet, you're dirty, and you sleep really well that night. So it's not, it's a little bit of backbreaking work. So I don't think we can continue to sustain this program with the volunteers. And the reason I say that is, even though we advertise for it, we ask for it, people aren't lining up to pick up shopping carts. And when people come up to our volunteers, they want to know how much they're getting paid. When they find out zero, that's about where it ends. You know, they want, if it was paid, I think people would be interested, but when they're just volunteering, that's not something people want to do. So I want to kind of forecasting that could be an issue for our city. And then a positive tickets program. You know, we receive national recognition with this program, and basically, building relationship with kids. And I can't give you like any stories, but I talk to officers, and you know what, it's not, it's hard to quantify and measure, but we have officers that are handing out positive tickets, whether it's Wild Waves, Community Center Pass, Sub-Zero, the Commons, Patterson West, and I hear stories about that. It's not going to make the front page of the mirror, but clearly, when people get these, I mean, they're really excited. And I really appreciate the business community partnering with us, but I think it's going a long way. It's just one little example of trying to build partnership with our citizens, particularly our youth, and that's continual work in progress. Okay, so this is our new programs request, and this is what's funded for the biannual budget. We have no financial change in 2019, so we're not asking for additional positions or funding. So for 2020, though, we're adding three more full-time equivalent officer positions. They'll be doing court transport officers, should this budget be passed. So we'll be adding three officer positions in 2020. And then we have one FTE for jail coordinator, and that's, we're budgeting $100,000 for salary and benefit. And then we have our M&amp;O startup costs for jail services, budgeting $15,000, and that would be for 2020. And then the new jail transport van, so one-time cost, $59,000. Again, that's for 2020. So this is what's funded during the biannual budget, if it's passed by council. And then a new program request that we're not funding for the police department, three FTE court transport officers, $30,000, just for one month. That would be December of 2019, when we have to transport all the officers out. So how are we going to pay for this? It's just for one month, so we're probably going to have to use some overtime funding, maybe cost savings within the police department. We'll be looking at our budget very carefully to see how we can fund that for additional costs, budgeting $30,000. So we'll probably use some of the existing staff to get that done, just for the first month. And that'll be the job of the deputy chief and the commanders to come up with a plan to make that happen. And then we also have the jail coordinator position, $8,333 for one month. That'll be Commander Kirk Schwan. He'll just pick up that duty, and he'll do that, and he'll put that in place for us as well. So a commander will pick up that slack to get that done. And then startup costs for jail services, $15,000. We'll just have to find a way to absorb that within our budget and make that happen. And then we have, we asked, we are very thin on our civilian staff positions, 29. And during the Great Recession, we've done everything to, just, there's no more fat to cut off, is what I'm telling you, in our civilian staff. We've done- We've done a staff study, looking at other police departments, and we got smaller police departments than us that have more commander positions, more supervisor position and lot more civilian positions. A police department of our size, if you can find that, that they have twenty-nine civilian positions, I would, I would be very surprised. We are very thin. That's, there's no doubt. So we did ask for one record specialist. I truly believe there is a need, but I also understand there's always a budgetary restraint. Money's not unlimited. So that was, that was not approved. And then TASER replacement program, just like our ballistic vest, there's a, the TASERS are only good for so many years and they won't, they won't certify it after that. So again, we're going to have to just maybe cut some of our training costs if we need to, look at every equipment cost and try to, try to purchase those TASERS within our existing budget. And then our vehicle fleet, again, fifty-nine thousand, we're just shifting that to two thousand and twenty. We do have one transport vehicle, but obviously, we need another one in case the vehicle needs maintenance or it breaks down. So we got to have a second vehicle, but we think we're going to be okay for a month. Worst-case scenario, we'll just have to use patrol cars, but we'll be moving people around. So.
And Chief, I, you know, we, I ask you to come up with north of two hundred thousand dollar savings in your department. Did you do that and where did it come from?
Yeah, so we came up with that, with the not staff, not positions that were not staffed. So two officer positions. We currently have a hundred and twenty-seven hired. We have seven vacant positions. So what I can tell you is we don't have any less officers on the street. Just like every other police agency, you know, we're struggling to bring people on. I'm glad you brought that up. I also want to tell you that because the market of getting, whether it's entry or lateral, it's very competitive. And just about every agency in Pierce County have take-home vehicles. And Kent is giving take-home vehicles, so is Renton, and there's hiring bonuses. What I'm telling you is the market is changing. And with take-home vehicles, there's efficiencies operationally. So what I'm telling you is moving forward, that's, that's one of the things we should continue to look for opportunities to expand our take-home car program. So for the public or for the council, might think take-home car vehicle. What I'm telling you is we already have a take-home car program and we've been expanding, expanding it over the years. I'm just telling you forecasting-wise, that's one of the things we'll need to look at and see if we can fund it in some way. Because what's going to happen is again, we talk about other departments, staff leaving. You know, police officers are no, no different. They're going to look at salary and benefit and a vehicle is a benefit. So we could, we could potentially start losing people. And what it takes to put an officer on the street, it's about a year and a half from the beginning to the end. And so you put so much money into them, you do not want to fall behind salary, benefit, or people will. And laterals will look and say, you know, I'm not going to go to Federalway, I'm going to go to Kent because they, they give me a car or they go to Renton, so yes.
So therefore, the, the plan is to get up, staffed up to one thirty-four through two thousand and nineteen, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we'll always probably have a, a two or three, you know, vacancies because once, once a vacancy occurs, it times, takes time to hire people. But I do want to thank the policy group because in two thousand and fourteen, we only had a hundred and twenty-six officers. And two thousand and seventeen, we were up to one thirty-one. So in two thousand, we're up to one thirty-four. So we're seeing an upward trend. But I also want to tell you that ten years ago, in two thousand and eight, we were at a hundred and thirty-seven. So ten years later, in two thousand and twenty, we'll be up to one thirty-seven. So what I'm telling you is ten years ago, we had more officers than we do today, but at least the policy group here has made steps to incrementally give us more officers. And I've shared this with you before, we need to be around one point four officers per thousand residents. So simple math, one hundred thousand people, we should be around a hundred and forty. If we don't, because we're seeing it today, the city's growing, but so is our surrounding area. More people are coming into our city, we're feeling it. We're feeling it. And we were one of the fastest-growing cities in two thousand and six. We grew by about three thousand people.
But seven or eight years ago, we were down to one twenty-two. Is that, is that not right?
We were one twenty-two, yes. At lowest point after the Great Reces, we were at one twenty-two. And I'm telling you, we were, we were into mandatory overtime at that point.
Right.
For our city.
And now the, by nineteen, we're going to be up to one thirty-four.
One thirty-four and then one thirty-seven.
With the three additional transport officers.
Yes, sir.
So one thirty-seven by the time we get done with the biennial.
That's right, one thirty-seven.
Just want to make sure you guys had that information. I was looking at this, I wanted to make sure that I was able to put my finger on that number for you guys. Deputy Mayor Honda? And then we've got Councilmember Copeng on the line.
But we have one twenty-seven actually working right now with seven.
They're at the agency right now, one twenty-seven with seven vacancies. And we got, currently got backgrounds going and we just continue to bring people in. And then every now and then, somebody thinks, you know, they want to retire and so it's, it's a constant, constant work. We had a, a pretty good turnover last couple of years. We've had quite a few people retire. So we had, we've got lots of new people, so yes.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Copeng, while we're, while we're asking questions, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you for the presentation. And I, I think that the story that you're telling about accountability and about accomplishment are, are things that the community really needs to understand. And I'm glad those were incorporated into the presentation. I think we get to looking at what actually, you know, the numbers and the dollars and the cents and we kind of lose sight of the fact of the, the important function that our police department does, does, does occupy in our, our community. And I want to thank you for, for that language specifically. But also would encourage that that information is, is, it continues to be on the web in some form, even after the, the budget process is over. I was going to ask about the, the, the amount of officers and that's obviously Deputy Mayor and the mayor both hit on that point, but I think that it's very important for our community to know that, that crime is down because of collaboration with the community, because of the way they will work with the community. But it's not just about numbers, about numbers of officers. There are, there are, there are procedures in place and there are efforts being done, taken, being done by the police department to make sure they're maximizing the efficiencies and doing what needs to be done to take care of our community. So I wanted to just, just make that point and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, and then we're going to continue with the presentation.
Thank you so much, Chief, for, for your presentation. Of course, a huge thanks to all your members in, in the PD. It's, I know that we appreciate their, their hard work and dedication to the community. You know, we, we talk about take-home cars and I'm glad you brought that up and, and that is a conversation I would like to have and I urge us to have this conversation because I feel like generally speaking, it's, it's, this is not the first time we've heard of this, I'm assuming. And so it's important that we keep it in the forefront because I think it's a need and it's a desire and it's, it's, it's a little something that, that will keep officers here. And I think that's an important amenity for our police department. So I, I urge for that, for us to have that conversation as well during this budget cycle or, well, for this budget cycle.
Well, it's something we're working toward. We, we've actually made a commitment to the Guild to work toward this. It's something that the, the Chief and myself in a day have been working on and, and something that, that is a commitment, you know, by my administration to get, to get there eventually. It has, it'll have to be incremental and they know that. But that's something where we're, those, those conversations are ongoing. Councilmember DuKlo?
I'm just looking at the other end, the revenue.
Yeah.
That's something we have to look at and plan for too. How do we grow the revenue so that we can make our police force active enough to take care of this growing city and other areas? So that's something really important that we really have to look at, is how we grow the revenue.
Right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. What would the cost be for take-home cars?
It's fully equipped, it's, we budget sixty-seven thousand dollars a car.
So how many cars would you like to have available to take home?
Well, there's a couple of different ways of doing it. I think you can phase it in. So one of the things is, you know, cars are made much better today and we only sign it to two officers. So an officer signed to a shift will share it. So an officer working Tuesday through Friday, we would use that car. And then officer who works, you know, the other days that person's off, they share cars. So one of the things we can do is when that vehicle's scheduled for replacement, if the vehicle's still in good shape, we keep it as a secondary vehicle. So then, you know, we continue to use that vehicle long as we can. And on the new vehicles, if we get new additional vehicles, obviously, we want to be collecting, be collecting replacement reserve. I don't have the exact number, but I'll be honest with you, we're not that far, we're not that far out. I, I'm going to just throw a number out there, I could be, help me if I'm wrong, but maybe we're, maybe twenty cars? Twenty cars or so from having every commissioned person having a car, twenty, twenty-five. So we're not, we're not talking about fifty vehicles or anything. We've been incrementally, for example, the, the contract with the Guild says if you live in the city, propose annexation area. We have detectives who take cars home, commanders, lieutenants take vehicles home. So what I'm telling you is there's not that many left if we wanted to do it. And there may be some savings in our budget that we may be able to apply towards that, you know, as, as we look at our budget in nineteen.
So that's, we're already looking at that. That's something that, that we're, we've committed to working on and something that we're communicating with the Guild about. When we see moments of opportunity to pick up a car there, we're going to, we're going to go there.
So just for clarity purposes, because this, this is an important issue, I think, amongst others, but if I recall quickly, that wasn't in the proposed budget, is that correct?
It's not in the budget at all. We just need to be looking for opportunities.
Right. And what I'm hearing you say, Mr. Mayor, is that during a budget adjustments period, cycles is when we possibly will see that.
Right. When, when certain amount of money gets freed up, that's when we're going to incrementally chip away at this. And we're not that far off, we're within striking distance. Just like we were with the lieutenants when they, you know, we had a, and that came in the contract and we were very, very close with the number of cars. I think it came down to like four cars and, and you, and an extended life of other cars to where it, it, we were able to make that jump. So this is, this is certainly in the cards.
Yeah, no, and I, and I think it's positive news. It's, it's different news than what I've heard in the past, which is good. And I'm glad, for me, I'm glad that we're walking towards a solution because the way to, the way to stop hearing something is when we solve it and we're able to move on. So I think that'll be a good thing.
There, there have been numerous meetings between myself and the Chief and the, you know, Finance Director. We want to make sure that, you know what they say, you eat an elephant as one bite at a time. And that's certainly how to do that here, instead of one big chunk, you know, we're going to, we're going to knock this down. You want to go ahead and finish your presentation?
Yes, just have a couple more slides left here. What do we want to accomplish for eighteen and nineteen? Obviously, there's, one of the things we do with our leadership team, all the supervisors, myself, we do a leadership workshop, retreat. We do, spend two days talking about, you know, what have we accomplished, what do we want to accomplish? And at times, we even brought outside folks to come in when we developed our new mission statement and so forth. But we, we invest in what we want to accomplish. And interesting about police work, it really doesn't change too much year to year, but what I would tell you is obviously, we want to have impact on everything we possibly can to make our community safe, address index and quality of live crimes. And second area, uniform, police presence. You know, people feel sa- safer when they see police vehicles in the neighborhood and downtown. And that's, like I said, I was telling you earlier, that's, that's the challenge of doing it with what we got. And monthly crime analysis, information and distribution, we'll continue to do that and work on our POP projects, problem-oriented policing, working on the hotspots. We'll continue, we can't do it alone, so we'll continue to collaborate with other jurisdictions, regionally, locally. And then manage jail services by utilizing available regional and other jail services, bringing financial savings. And the last slide here. Continue to provide resource and partnership with other organizations, organizations to address youth violence. One of the things that I know Commander Grossnickel goes to, he's, has the youth action team meetings. We'll continue to work with our big partner, Federalway Public Schools, Boys and Girls Club, other service clubs, faith community. We will be part of this community, so that work will be ongoing. Traffic is a big issue. When spring comes around, we get tons of complaints about speeding vehicles. Summertime, Dash Point Road, Five-O-Nine. But it's, people are outside, they're working on the yard, vehicles are always speeding, going by. They just don't notice until they're outside and then we get flooded with calls. And that's when we deploy, you know, our officers and, and when school starts up again, that's a, the traffic is a big part of what we do. And we are definitely seeing an increase in traffic accidents in our city. It's a strictly volume-related. More and more people are using our streets. Particularly the last five years, we've seen a big jump. Registered sex offender verification program, we'll continue to do that. We receive about a thirty thousand dollar grant. And our detectives go out and level-one sex offenders, we check up on them once a year. Level-two, every six months. And level-three, every quarter, we check in and make contact with them face-to-face. And when there's violations, we prepare a report and file charges for sex offenders now registering within our city. And then again, CAPS unit, huge, huge asset to our department and they do phenomenal job and will continue to do that. And then succession planning, next five to seven years, I don't know how long that Deputy Chief's going to go, but most of us will be, will be retired. So we need to be developing, developing people internally, all throughout the organization. And I, I know I, teachers are in the business of growing people, but I think we're the same way in our leadership team in the police department. Our business is to grow the organization and grow the people within the organization so that when I retire, not anytime soon, okay, but when I retire, somebody, we need to have succession planning where somebody comes in and stands up here before you and, and continues the business of what we do. And that is the end of the presentation.
All right. Any more questions? Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. First of all, I want to thank you, you personally and your staff for the work that you do to protect us and to protect the city. The, the work that you do is one of the most difficult jobs out there. I share with the Chief my personal experience growing up with my uncle. And my uncle was the police chief of the third largest city in my country, country of ninety million people. So, you know, I, I know a little bit about the work that you do and I really appreciate that. The question I about to ask you or the comments that I about to make strictly from the financial perspective. So first of all, you mentioned about the ratio of one point four police officer per one thousand. Where is that number came from?
Well, it differs from every community. So you might go to Seattle and they might be, you know, two point six off, that's, I'm just making this up. It just varies from community to community. So the makeup of the community is going to, what's going to determine what that ratio is. I would say the one point four is kind of the historical number for Federalway. So sometimes you can't compare Federalway to Tacoma or to Seattle because it's not the same community. But I would just tell you that is historically of a Federalway. So we maintain one point four. And then we look at jurisdictions that are similar makeup to us, like Kent, Renton. You look at some of the communities around us. So we're all going to be in that range of one point three to one point five range per one thousand. So yes, historical number for Federalway, but we look at the jurisdictions around us.
My next question is, you mentioned on your presentation that the overall crime reduction of ten percent in twenty seventeen and that seventeen percent reduction in twenty eighteen, the first six months compared to twenty seventeen. If this trend continued, obviously, you're doing a great job, right, controlling the crime rate. Then my next question would be, do we need that many officers?
You can't equate crime rate to always to staffing issue. What I'm going to tell you is that I don't think this trend will continue. As long as I've been a police officer, I've been here almost now thirty-one years. I mean, it's cyclical. It goes up and down. And it goes up and down for various reasons. So you need to be strategic about your staffing. You can't go, hey, the, I've heard people say this, hey, crime's down, so let's reduce number of officers. Well, let's say crime goes up and you go, hey, we got to get more officer. I'm telling you, we're a year and a half out from getting those bodies. So you need to be strategic about having the right number of officers. And if your crime's down, it allows you to do more proactive work, more outreach with the community. So you can't always, what I'm telling you is even the crime is down, doesn't mean the workload necessarily goes dramatically down for our people. I can tell you for our homicide detectives and detective side, their workload dramatically, they, they're able to work on lesser violent crimes because we just haven't had a lot of. of violent crimes this year. So, you know, in other years, we were pretty high in 16 and 17, so it's cyclical. So, you don't know, you can't always control when there's gonna be a domestic violence or there might be a violent crime or even a homicide. You can't always predict that. So, you gotta have the people and the system in place to deal with it. You don't wanna be reactive. And so, I hope that, I could explain further if you like. I'm trying to.
Okay. I, I, I think I got it.
Okay.
The next question is currently you have 127 officers.
On, onboard.
Onboard. And you have seven vacancies.
Yes.
And you, you anticipated that in 2019, you will fill those vacancies?
We'll get really close because I know what's coming in the pipeline. We have more laterals testing, we have entry-level positions. I know they're coming in. So, I believe that towards the end of the year, we might be down about four. And then, yes, we should, in 19, we should be getting close.
Okay. So, stay with me on this. Those seven vacancy position, are they funded?
Yes.
Okay. So, because right now, they are empty, right? You haven't hired anybody.
Yes.
So, from now until the end of the year, there's potential saving of those positions. My question is, where is that money gonna go? Is it gonna go back to some bucket of funds, or how does that work?
Okay, I can answer that. So, when you have vacancies, then there's a little bit more overtime. So, just 'cause you have the vacancy doesn't always translate to exact savings because we have support service side looking at the numbers, and they're looking at the budget, and they're making projections. We get reports from the finance director. So, we're always looking at the budget. So, if we think we have some extra, we've spent some more, we can spend a little more somewhere else because the requirements for the police chief is make sure you're within the budget. So, what I'm telling you is, yes, that salary savings has kept us within the budget because we end up using that money for maybe something else. Maybe we'll end up purchasing Taser if we have money at the end of the year, you know, allocated. But if there's money just left over, then it's carry for. You know, we, we give it back, and the city, all of you decide how you want to spend that money.
I'm glad that you mentioned about the overtime, and this is one of the area that I tried to learn about your operation. I noticed that every year, your department spent roughly about a million dollars overtime, not, not billable. So, and I know that some situation, we have to use overtime, there's no question about it.
Yes.
But I'm looking at the last five years consistently, the police department used about a million dollars per year. So, my question is, is there any way, or is there something that you can do with your staff to perhaps reduce that overtime budget?
To some extent. I, I think, when you say it's over a million dollars, I think it was for 16 and 17. If you look at the years before, you know, it wasn't quite that high. I can tell you in 16 and 17, we had unusual occurrence. We had high number of violent crimes. And I remember standing before here, and the policy group told me, hey, whatever funds you need. So, we did, if you have a homicide, you can almost anticipate probably around $15,000, maybe even $20,000 in overtime expenditure if it's a complicated case to solve, or officer, you know, detectives working long hours. So, what I'm telling you, 16 and 17, we did have high numbers, and we did have a lot of call-outs. I know in 18, we're gonna be lot, we're gonna be less. We're gonna be less. Another thing why we, it's hard for us to manage overtime is the labor group, like lieutenant's group or in the guild, will get a contract and it'll be approved by the policy group. So, for example, the officers are paid a certain overtime rate on holidays now, higher rate, which, you know, we would have no control over. Or the lieutenant's group have right, first write a refusal for, you know, overtime slot that comes available. Again, those contract negotiations are done, and that costs us additional funds. So, yes, it is higher than what's budgeted, and I don't know that we can, we may need to really do more analysis, but I'm thinking of looking another year or two after this biennial budget, and I will come to all of you and say, you know, we've done our analysis, here's years that we didn't have a lot of crime, violent crime, and it costs us this much, and here's some years. So, we gotta look at the average, but it could be, I'm thinking it's a little underfunded at this point. But in 18, we should finish much better. I don't know about much better. We should, we will be under a million dollars in 18. But there was two years that we got up to, you know, a little over a million dollars.
And is there, on the overtime budget, is, we've got officers working certain overtime jobs, whether it's sporting events at Husky Stadium or other things, does that go into that budget and then is reimbursed?
No.
Because we've got folks working at Wild Waves as well.
No, we work with finance and how we, those are billable. They don't go into the, the general overtime.
Because we get that, we get that compensated.
Yes, we get that, we get that money back, and there's a little extra fund added to for city expense. So, every hour that officers work, the city gets reimbursed, certain dollar amount.
Because technically, it is an overtime, you know, pay for them, but that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, it's extra duty job for the officers.
Extra duty job, right. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Tran.
One more question.
And then Councilmember Johnson.
Then I'll be quiet. This question probably directed at a day. What is our total budget for the city in 2019 and 2020? And how much of that is the proposed budget for the police department?
I can tell you what it is for the police department, but I will let the director answer first.
Out of the total city budget, especially in the general fund, the police is pretty much over 50% of the general fund. But to clarify the question that was asked before, actually, if you're looking at the police department overtime, a portion of that is actually reimbursable. So, the entire amount, when you're looking at that 1 million, the entire 1 million is actually not due to their regular overtime, a portion of it is reimbursable. So, and to follow up again on your question, if you look at the total city budget, because police is in general fund, they are in Prop 1, they are in red light, so for the total city, you have, I think, about 48, 49%. And that depends on the capital project that we have going on during the year. Nonetheless, that's still very big.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for being here tonight. I just have a couple of questions, and one of them kind of relates to pay adjustments. So, one of the things that you talked about was the competition in the region for pay. And can you speak to the level of competition with other jurisdictions in terms of pay? Is it, is it a large margin? Do you feel we're losing officers because of that margin?
I think, I think we're doing okay. I think we're doing okay. I mean, there's different ranks, but I think in terms of where we are today, I think we are competitive. We're certainly by no means one of the highest-paid agencies, but I think we're competitive. Maybe just, I don't know exactly where that's gonna fall, and, and benefits are, you know, it's not apples to apples when you measure all the time, but I think we're doing okay. My concern is we just don't wanna fall behind. And what I'm forecasting right now is, I got, we have agencies in the South King County saying, you know, we're gonna issue take-home vehicles. So, when people are looking to come from other places, or maybe even people from our jurisdiction, we could potentially lose people. So, I'm just sharing with the policy group so that we're moving forward. We're thinking about how to retain our people and how to give that benefit so we get the best people to our city.
No, I appreciate that, and I think encouraging and trying to incentivize some of those things could be good. One thing that you mentioned, and I do agree with you, people feel safer when the police is out there on the streets and keeping our streets safe. But I also think in terms, and we talked about this the other day, representation within the department. And with the new hiring going forward, you know, how do we work to exhaust every effort so that our police department is reflective of the community? And so, I would just propose, you know, trying to work with some of the local chapters of, like the National Organization for Black Law Enforcement. I've spoken with their chapter president, and they wanna work with us on hiring more officers of, of color. And so, I just think that, how can we, going forward, move in that direction? And then what support do you need from the council with that?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, that was a, I do agree with you. That was really healthy discussion that you and I had, and I would certainly be open to other ideas about how to recruit and hire more people from our community. What steps could we put in or give incentives for people who live in our city when they take the civil service exam? And I think we need to explore more about that because I think we can hire more people from our community. We're gonna have diversity because at least 50% of our, you know, citizens are, you know, minority groups. So, I think by recruiting internally, we might be able to do that. Or other ideas that the policy group might come up with, or maybe the advisory board. I think we need to be a little more robust in thinking proactively in that area.
All right. Thank you. Great question. Councilmember Moore?
Well, I love these questions that are coming up. I think they're real solid, and I think it, it really should be a priority for us to look at hiring within our community. I mean, what a powerful statement that would make for someone to say, I grew up right here, this is my community, I'm totally invested in it, and it, and now I'm a police officer here in Federal Way, you know, serving my community. I think it's a very powerful statement to make, and, and I appreciate the questions that, that are coming up in your, in your statement, your answer to that. So, my questions are kind of, obviously, your department's doing quite well, and, and naturally, I, I wanna talk more about improvements, and because I always like to live by the model of, we can always do, we can always improve. I mean, as a new husband, I'm always looking to improve, you know, always looking to improve. My wife would love, she probably was, she could probably hear me say that. But at end rate, so, one of the questions I kinda have is, I, I really appreciate what you're saying in terms of your number of car thefts have gone down, theft in general. I, I appreciate that, and I certainly don't dispute, but I would love to give a, get a more zero N look at what those numbers specifically look like. And I, I know that I've done that with you before, I'd like to do that again. Or maybe that's something our committee can kinda go through as well on the Public Safety Committee. But, you know, there-
You want the raw numbers for the crimes?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna get a more detailed analysis of that.
So, let me, let me just address that now. And I'm sorry to, sorry, I apologize for interrupting. Chief, do you have the raw numbers that you can provide to the council?
Well, absolutely.
All right, let's just do that tomorrow.
I can send that tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Moore?
Thanks, Mayor. So, that being said, you know, there are times where I, I still go to Facebook, and I know you love Facebook, Chief, and, you know, it's an important communication tool because that's where a lot of our citizens are communicating. And, you know, we do still hear of car thefts and whatnot. I know that we're never gonna get away from that. So, my question to you is, what, what, what do you need from us? What, what other tools do you need that maybe you haven't asked for that would continue to aggressively enhance that? Because, again, like, I, I understand, look, it's never gonna go down to zero, but we can always look to improve, and there's always best practices. For example, I, I mean, is there, I can't, great bu-
Let me ask you a question.
Well, I'm not done with my question. Great budget, but I just, I want details in here, which is, is there more in the budget for the technology that we approved a couple of years back that identifies stolen cars as police cars are driven? I don't know what that's called.
ALPR.
ALPR. We still have it.
Yeah. I mean, can we get more of those? I mean, what else can we do to improve that? And what do you need from us? Thank you.
There's like, I think there's like three questions in your, so, as far as like social media, you know, today, information travels so fast. So, I think more people have more access to information than they ever have. For example, years ago, I don't even think it was that long ago, if media wanted a story, they call, like, every police department, they would ask, is something going on? You know, we don't get any more calls from the media anymore because people are reporting through social media, there's Twitter and so forth. So, I think if you follow social media, I think it would, crime's always been there, but people had no way of really communicating that. So, if you follow, do a lot of social media and watch a lot of news, I think you would be left with impression that there's really more crime than there really is. But there's always been crime. People just had no way of communicating. So, I think that could create that perception that, you know, crime is up. So, I know what you're saying. People think crime is up sometimes, but, you know, we're looking at data, and we just look at it year after year. So, that's that. ALPR, Automatic License Plate Reader, we have three of them, and I get report every month on the number of reads and how much it's deployed. And I would say that having three is sufficient for us, and that's had a really positive impact, reducing, you know, recovering number of stolen vehicles. Might be stolen vehicle coming in from another city to do a crime in Federal Way, and we're, you know, we're sometimes we're chasing them. So, there's, I see a lot of activity in that way, and I think it's had a positive impact. I think there might have been a question in between, but I'm not, I might have missed it.
I mean, is there room to get another one?
Oh.
You know, because that, getting a fourth one only enhances our method of, of then find stolen cars.
I would say, I wouldn't say no to that, but if we're gonna spend money, for example, to me, I would rather want more resource in staffing. I think that would be more impactful, to have more impact in our community. Because I know somebody will bring up like, hey, why don't we get body cameras? Okay, so, we're gonna spend half a million on a system and staff to do body cameras. I'd rather get six more officers. If you ask me right now, now, if I had plenty of staffing, we're at 200 officers, and you want to spend half a million on, you know, getting body cameras for all our officers, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'm not opposed to the video camera. It's how you want to spend that money. And at this point, the biggest need for us is staffing. We need more officers, we need more staff.
Okay. And my last question, Mr. Mayor, is, and this will be shorter than last. So, that being said, in terms of improvements and enhancements, you know, I, I hear you talking about youth outreach and whatnot, but is there more specific plans that you have? And what tools do you need from us as we discuss this budget to continue to enhance reaching out to all sort, all of our youth in our community? Because I know that some of our youth have a negative connotation on our police department, and of course, the more interaction we have, that's innovative, that's out to the box, the better. And so, the question is, is what might you need from us to continue to enhance that program?
I would tell you just continually support the police officers and our police department. We do so much to do community outreach. Of course, we can always do more, but I'm telling you, it comes down to our workload, our capability. There's only, it's, it's tough for us to have special programs and so forth when we gotta have all our people really work in the street or work in criminal cases. But from top down, you know, our, we developed a mission statement in 2014. Our department motto is earning the public's trust, and like Positive Tickets Program, National Night Out, all these activities that we participate in is all to build trust. But I also know that there is a, a division in this country. It's not just to Federal Way. It's a continual work in progress. I don't watch a lot of TV, I don't do much social media, but I'm not, I follow it enough to know that there's things going on. So, it's a, it's, it's something we're gonna have to work on. But I would be open to any feedback, suggestions from the policy group, brainstorm, that's what it's all about. If you have some advice, we'd be interested in looking at that, but that is how we try to operate, be part of the community. Many of us belong to service clubs, we try to be part of the community, have a, try to have a pretty good pulse of what's going on, just like all of you do as well. You know what's going on in the community because you go to a lot of meetings, you talk to people. I try to do the same thing.
Uh-huh. Councilor-
Yeah, I'd like to go back in history a little bit here, since and before Andy was chief of police. The police and the citizens were not working together. There was a whole different attitude with him. You weren't the mayor then. And when that police chief left and Andy was appointed, things changed. Andy was a man for the community. He was out there in public all the time, he would listen to people's complaints, and he'd act on them. He also worked with the police officers and gave them credit for what they were doing and helped them understand more about the community. And I think we now, we have a wonderful community, police force, and people who work for the police. And it's tough being a police officer. I remember when I was younger, I respected police, and then there was a time when police officers were, were hated by the citizens in this, in this country because of some of the things that they had done and some of the attitudes of rebellion people. But I have seen, I am so proud- But I have seen, I am so proud of our police officers. Every one of you that work in a department, whether you're on, outside in the public or you're working in the office or whatever, I think we are fortunate to have Andy and the people that are on our force and the way they feel about this community. They are a part of this community. They want to help us. They don't want to hurt us. They want to look out for us. So, you know, if we can help you in ways funny, with money to get what you need, but I also want people to hear that you really are valuable and I really appreciate you and I think most of the people in this community do. So thank you for your service.
Well said.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Councilmember DuClos. All right. So any other questions? Mark and Lydia, Councilmember Copeng and Assefa Dawson?
I'm good.
I have a question. Just wanted to say thank you for all, everything you do and thank you, Chief, for spending time with me the other day and just sharing with me what your goals, your business and what you have going with the department. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Chief, what I add, now I recognize that the police department presentation is over. Mr. Chase is going to give comments regarding the police budget. If you could stay, if we could just have the police representation stay close and then we're going to walk through the rest of the, just in case there's a response that we can provide. So let's call on Scott Chase and then let's do the other comments too. So Dana, you don't have to wait until the end of the night. We'll call Dana Holloway and then Mr. Lamont Stiles. Scott?
Hi, my name's Scott Chase. I live behind the quad off First Avenue and I'm here to speak about the police budget. I think the police department could use a lot more money. Okay? So we're part of this I-5 corridor now, okay? Seattle and Tacoma are closing in on us. We're talking about Highway 99 and I-5, the, the growth rates associated with the Growth Management Act pushing transit through here and so on. And so, so we're not a bedroom community. I, I've lived here about 32 years now, so about a third of a century, and there's been a lot of changes. And so, so, and the chief, he, he mentioned, you know, a lot of the numbers, the ratios you're talking about. I've looked at those too. So Washington state average is about 1.44. Tacoma's about 1.6, okay? So, and in fact, Tacoma in 2008 bumped up to 2.0 to address some of the crime and they have since backed off and they set out a goal to reduce crime by 50%. They fell short of that goal, but everybody was united against crime. Now, the chief said, I'd love to have more officers. Now, now, we're talking about a historical ratio of 1.4, but, but that's just a random number, okay? So I think we need to think about our neighboring agencies and how we're being encroached on, you know, and, and crime being pushed into South King County and question, you know, a 1.4. I mean, like was mentioned before, it wasn't that long after the Great Recession that we were at 1.2. So the community is hungry for more officers, for more engagement, more proactive engagement in the community and, and, and programs and awareness. And I'd also like to say that, that I think the residents of Federal Way need to be called to action to better protect themselves and prevent crime so that, so that the police department isn't writing 20,000 crime reports every year, okay? So, so that they're, they're able to spend less time pushing paper and more time out there in the community, working with the community. And to do that, I know the, I mentioned to the mayor that, that I saw in Q13, that the city of Pala was on the news about 9:00 PM routine and 10 things you can do to help prevent auto theft and auto break-ins. So, so I really think a lot more could be done by the community. I think that currently, we're kind of, from a maturation standpoint, still immature from a community standpoint, that I don't think we're helping our officers enough, but there needs to be a cooperative effort to, to increase, you know, that engagement. In summary, they need more cops, okay? We need to be thinking more in the regional Seattle-Tacoma area, okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. And Scott, thank you so much for your service in our community as an HOA officer and president and, and all the work you've done on behalf of your neighborhood.
Thank you.
My neighborhood. Thank you. Exactly. Thank you. All right, Dana?
Hi, back again.
Yes.
I don't think this could be a four-hour meeting tonight. It was a good meeting last night. Yeah. It was a good meeting last night and I just was frustrated because I couldn't see the, the charts that everybody was presenting. There's a lot of data, no consistency in size of the font. And so this morning, I thought about that and I emailed the mayor and said, well, can we get copies of the presentations put on the website? And that's why I'm sitting in the back of the room because I brought my laptop and I'm watching like you guys probably do, well, you're always looking down. I thought you were sleeping, but you're probably looking at your computers. So anyway, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Courtney, for doing that. Some observations about the budget process. First of all, I am pleased that the proposed budget did not raise taxes. I expected to see the Transportation Benefit District appear again. It did not. Thank you very much. I was prepared for it, though. The presentations given yesterday were informative and show the directors and department heads have made hard choices of how and where to cut their department budgets. City departments and employees have performed admirably with less FTEs than industry standards in most areas. Unfortunately, most departments have been running understaffed for years and that trend seems to be continuing. Due to lower wages and high workload, employees have been leaving for better jobs to other cities. Employees haven't been receiving cost of living wage increases, so in reality, every year, they make less money. While I commend a goal for studying wages in 2020, when the funds become available by withdrawing from SCORE, that's still a year and a half away. The, it's obvious that the city needs to increase substantial, sustainable revenue streams to fully fund the city budget and programs. That's FUDINDE, which was the number one top priority council goal from the February retreat. While well-intended, that's almost eight months ago and so far, I don't believe anything's happened. And lastly, there are basic and essential services the city must provide within limited city revenues. There's not money available for much non-essential items. So if the mayor or council adds any new expenditures that's not in the proposed budget, I request that it, or it says it's important that you specifically identify where the money is coming from to pay for anything you put in the budget, including if that, if that's going to take money away from something that's already in the budget, I want to know that. If you take away from someplace to pay for something new, I want to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. And Dana, just give you some immediate feedback. So actually, I was talking to, Aday wrestled me to the floor after the presentation last night and we agreed after, after some arm pulling on his part, that we're going to look at doing this salary survey next year. We think actually, we can find that money to get that done because everybody up here agrees that this is something that can't wait. And what we'll do is, we've got, we've got this anticipated revenue. We think we can move some things around with a zero impact on the budget to get that, to get those metrics ready for implementation for '20, not delay for that year. So that's something we're going to work on. The second thing I do want to say is, we went six years without a COLA, but for the past five years, there has been a COLA every year.
But it didn't beat cost of living, it didn't meet-
Yes.
So they're still losing?
That's right. That's right. Keeping up with, with that, with those, with inflation has been a, a challenge. But, and I think, you know, we were, we were, we went to a real, you know, cut and there were significant layoffs when the, when the Great Recession hit. And now we've, we're starting to move back out, out of that, but now it's time to address the staffing issues.
I just feel as a, everybody I've dealt with, both in, and I'm at a lot of the meetings and committees and commissions, so, and I've dealt with a lot of your employees, the employees here and staff, they're wonderful. And the thought that we're losing good people because of that, it just, it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's hard. Deputy Mayor Honda?
I've asked for several years, starting with Mayor Priest, for a salary study. So what does it cost? Because I've been told though so many times that, what does it cost to do a salary study?
Probably, you know, one of the things we've been talking, thank you, law enforcement. Thank you very much, police team. Great job. I think what we're going to want to do is probably address, we've been talking about doing simultaneously and comprehensively salary survey and workload study, but in order to really address the immediate need with regard to salaries, we'll probably do that first. I would imagine between $50,000 to $100,000, somewhere in there. Last time I think, the, the figure was around $100,000 and Aday convinced me last night after the meeting that this is something where we can move some things around or, or rely on other funding that we know is going to come from the SCORE savings. So anyway, and what we'll do, Aday, is maybe tomorrow, send that, send that email out and that that's, that's under consideration, that the salary survey is not necessarily put off until 20, until 2020. Mr. Stiles, thank you so much for your patience.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Lamont Stiles for the record.
Peace and blessings to everybody. All praise to the Most High for allowing me to be here. I just wanted to, on a positive note, there were some things that, that were said earlier as far as I think the citizen that had went through the, the situation with the court. I think that's a testimony to, to alternative programs that can help our citizens as a oppose, opposition to like jail time and locking them up. Also, when you look at the, the crime, when you're talking about stolen cars, youth violence and things of those nature, I think that those, those community programs would help out with, with reducing those, those, those crime levels. When you look at the crime that's being done and you look at like theft or breaking and entering and things of that nature, a lot of them are drug-related, economic-based. So job creating, job creation program for the youth and things of that nature are great ideas and alternatives to just law enforcement. I don't think law enforcement as a whole is the, is the solution. I think Aday and I, and I have to actually clarify what, what was said as far as the budget and what we spend in law enforcement as far as the overall budget. And I think I would like to see more of a even according to what we, community programs for our citizens. Also, Ms. DuClosy always talks about bringing revenue into the city and I still don't know what the ideas are for this. I know, I was watching one of the meetings that you guys had and somebody brought up the marijuana stores again. I'd like to see what the ideas are for increasing revenue for the city. If the city only makes revenue by certain means, then what are the ideas to increase that? I'm an entrepreneur, small business. The SBDC, I worked with them when I first started my first barber shop. That was very influential in helping me start my own business. So I would definitely like to see more interaction when it comes to that. We have grandiose ideas for the city and me, looking at urbanization of Federal Way and being here for such a long time, I think that it's going to come and it's inevitable. But what that looks like, whether it's more planes flying over us or if it's a light rail that's coming through, I think the citizens need to stand up and have more of a say in what that looks like in the aftermath. We have to hold our King County friends, associates accountable for what they promised the city of Federal Way. I'd like to see the, the council members being more strong, asking tough questions and making sure that the city is represented when people come in and try to urbanize the city. And then just, like I said, you guys have been very reactionary to a lot of the things that have been said. A lot of cities might not get that, that type of feedback or that type of response from their, their representatives, but I can say that you guys have really addressed issues that have been talked about by the citizens and I appreciate you guys for that.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember DuClos?
I was just going to say, the Revenue Enhancement Committee has had to cancel a couple of meetings due to conflicts, but we will be getting back together again, I believe, next week. And we will be, we're taking, we're taking ideas from anybody who has them. We will be presenting what we come up with, but that's not saying that that's the final answer. We're going to be looking at this because it's not a problem of overspending, it's a problem of not having the money to provide the services that our people need here. And that's what we really need to look at. So I thank you for your, your comments.
All right. Thank you. All right. Clifford Garrett and then Judy James.
Hi, my name is Clifford Garrett. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Over the last two days, many members of staff have made cases for higher levels of spending. The city has an easy way to collect an $872,000 annuity without raising taxes on its constituents. It's as simple as allowing retail marijuana sales. Four retail marijuana stores in the city of Federal Way would likely generate $20 million in retail sales. The 3.35% sales tax collected would generate $670,000 in sales tax remittance directly to city of Federal Way. $170,000 of that figure would be unrestricted. Further, $20 million in retail marijuana sales would generate approximately $202,000 in unrestricted revenue from excise tax payments. That's in addition to the sales tax. And the unrestricted sales tax and excise tax together would amount to $372,000 or $872,000 in total funds. Keep in mind that this is a sustainable revenue stream and not a one-time payment. Over the years, I've heard a lot of sky is falling arguments related to legal marijuana retail sales. None of these arguments have come to fruition. Let's take a look at the reality of marijuana in Federal Way in 2018. Federal Way is completely surrounded by jurisdictions that allow retail marijuana stores, which means that $20 million in retail sales is either A, going into the black market inside Federal Way, or B, leaving the city, probably a combination of both. Lastly, I will point out that Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah, all have recreational retail stores. These are all cleanly cities with a lot of families. They're great places to live and I don't see why Federal Way's experience would be any different. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Judy James.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, council members. I'd like to add a couple of points about retail marijuana stores. One is that I've heard a fear expressed that marijuana stores coming in will drive other businesses out. I know that there's been some person who came here that has an ice cream store who said he would definitely leave. I can only tell you that between my son and I, we own three marijuana stores. Not one business has left because we moved into the neighborhood, not one. And, you know, why would they? Our customers come from all walks of life. They look like you. They look like me. They don't come in and cause trouble. They don't come in, go out in the parking lot, get high and bother the other businesses. They come in just like you would go into the grocery store. They come in, buy their bottle of wine for dinner, get in their car and go home. It's the same as our customers. It's no different. I'd also like to talk about the idea that having marijuana stores in the city limits would somehow increase the crime in the city. Property crime isn't caused by retail marijuana stores coming into the city. Property crime is caused by low per capita income. There are a lot of studies that will tell you that. And that's not just here, it's all over the world. And Federal Way's per capita income is 12% lower than the state average. 17% of the kids who are under 18 in Federal Way live below the poverty level. That's your crime problem right there. That's your property crime. It's not marijuana stores. Young males are the most likely to commit crimes and I wonder if there is a dependable, sustainable revenue stream in the budget to fund programs for them because marijuana stores would help fund them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to the community development presentation with Brian Davis, our director. our director.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you and Deputy Mayor Honda and members of council. This is a presentation for Community Development, and I'm one of the aforementioned Big Four Departments that have been talked about a lot. This is the organization of the department. We have three divisions. Planning is the first, you know, as you come into the, into the City Hall looking for planning is the first step, sub by Doc Hanson and a team of six planners and a part-time intern on a seasonal basis. And then the Building Division by Scott Sproul, Scott's here tonight, who oversees the Building Inspectors, Plans Examiner, and the Code Enforcement Division. Together with Doc, Scott, and I, we oversee the Permit Center, which is the heartbeat of the department right here in the middle. So we jointly supervise this department. That's where you go to the counter to get information on permits and also to turn in your permits, resubmittals, and that's where the action, that's where the action takes place. We also have Jeff Watson, who you've heard from, you're familiar with his work in Community Services. He has Sarah Bridford, who you've heard from, and then also Jerry Lynn, who you know quite well, who was housed in your offices. And then finally, we have administrative support that does the magic for the whole department. So that's us, quickly summarized. As you can see by the function of our department, we are almost entirely personnel. We have no capital funds, we have no, other than staples and pens, we don't have a lot of supply budget. So when we're talking about making adjustments to the Community Development Budget on the order of two-hundred-thousand, we had to basically look at either people or revenue, and the proposal for our department is a combination of both. The first is to cut an inspector that's been talked about. This one has been vacant for some time, and so we're not laying off anyone, but we are proposing to cut the position. With salary and benefits, it's about a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. Combined with increasing our fees by five percent, that will roughly get us another hundred thousand, so the proposal is about two-hundred-and-twenty dollars in savings, which goes towards the balanced budget that you have for you. Obviously, there is an impact to the development community on this, and as Tim mentioned earlier, we're in somewhat of a transition right now, where we've been able to keep our standard forty-eight-hour turnaround time for inspections if one is scheduled. We recently had to change that to seventy-two hours, just because the inspections were piling up and we didn't have that third inspector anymore. So seventy-two hours is not unheard of, but traditionally in Federal Way, we have been consistently forty-eight hours, and the development community is used to that. So there is a bit of a shock to them when we can't respond in forty-eight hours, but this is going to be a reduction in service with that inspector position not there anymore. We're also, the Community Development Department is entirely non-represented, so when the mayor talks about helping out those who are not represented with a COLA increase and also a salary study, this is, what you're looking at is really one of the focal points of that conversation. So that's the proposal. My next slides will review some of the things that we have done and also some of the things that we're, have goals for the next biennium within the budget, and if there's any questions in the end, I'd be happy to answer them. So I'm not going to read all of these, but you're familiar with a lot of these, since a lot of our work does need to go before council or has a controversial nature about it that eventually gets to the council's attention. We did a series of zone changes. We did amendments to the code with regards to the docket process and also multifamily and self-storage developments, which you saw. We're continuing review of light rail with sound transit coming to Federal Way. That's been going on for several years and will continue for several years. Some of the more notable, ongoing or completed projects, of course, the IRG proposals for the former warehouse at property is an ongoing review that we're doing. Several self-storage units that were in the queue. Also, on this list, I would note, Elenos Yogurt was a big effort. Tim Johnson deserves a lot of credit for that one. There was a lot of regulatory difficulties with that project. Elenos was reoccupying an existing building and had a lot of building code issues, and our team worked tirelessly with the applicant, but having Tim in City Hall advocate on behalf of the applicant also gave the owner peace of mind that the city certainly was a friend to Elenos and wanted Elenos in Federal Way. We, I would also note there towards the bottom, we're beginning the review of three new elementary schools. This is a result of the passage of the school bond by the community. One elementary school alone would keep us quite busy. That's no small project. The Federal Way High School was, was a very lengthy process, and even though an elementary school is a little bit smaller than a high school, it nonetheless is a major project, and we have three of them that we'll be reviewing in the next couple of years, followed by a few more schools after that. So we will be busy with reviewing schools for some time, and that's a significant time commitment. We helped nearly fourteen thousand customers in 2017. Twenty-eighteen numbers we don't have yet, but just to give you a snapshot on an annual basis, that's the volume that we work with, and just over forty-five-hundred permits of all kinds on an annual basis. On the Human Services side, we administered thirty-eight programs and awarded over a million dollars in awards and grants. We also secured the Section 108 loan for financing of the PAC, which is an ongoing issue that will continue next year and determining how best to deal with that as there's some, you know, with dealing with federal grants, there are some complexities, and this one is no exception. We're going to be looking towards working with our neighbor cities and developing a consortium to better coordinate our community development block grant activities. And then we'll also be helping grant applicants with online application process. There's a lot of paper involved with grant applications, and our block grant program and community services program is no exception. So getting that available will be greatly helpful to that. Next year, we'll continue to look at, as I mentioned before, looking at the plan review and permits with the workload either staying the same or slightly increasing with the decreased staff levels. Also with administering, dealing with complaints and citizen action requests, working with the police. The Chief Wong mentioned the shopping cart program, which we've been working with them on developing a program should the volunteers, the dedicated volunteers, should they retire.
And didn't you just recently meet with the retailers?
We did. So we are, we're conducting meetings with them to get their feedback on a draft proposal that we have right now. We want to work with them. In our research, we found that other cities have fined, issued fines to retailers for carts that are off-premise, and we want to get their feedback on coming up with solutions that we don't have to resort to that, because that's not a real win for anyone, but, you know, that might need to be an incentive to get them to keep their carts on the property better than it has been in the past. So the second bullet point I want to talk about for a minute, implement Blue Beam software to allow for electronic submittal, resubmittal, and review of building plans. Let me just pause a second, give you a visual demonstration. So this is what normally someone would have to bring in. This is, this is the new Starbucks next to Walmart. So Starbucks comes in with a wheelbarrow of these and gives them to the counter. So we've been talking a lot about paper, which department has the most paper. I'm confident that Community Development processes the most paper. Not that we have to purchase it, but in terms of, Councilmember Johnson's concerned about environmental responsibility, someone's producing this paper somewhere as because of what we require. So what this Blue Beam software will do is allow them to submit all this information through the Blue Beam software program. On top of that, it will allow all of our reviewers, so once it gets into City Hall, we got people that are running all over distributing this to the various reviewers throughout City Hall, whether they be a planner or a building inspector or someone in Public Works or the Fire Department. Lots of running around, lots of storing. I mean, if you just look at this, the volume of this takes up space, and we have walls of these that takes up space in City Hall. So being able to have that software is going to help out a great deal, and most communities do that. You know, you heard a lot of comments tonight from other department heads about it's uncommon for a city of our size to have X. Well, one of those is to accept electronic submittals and review. So we are very excited for this step in progress for our department. That was a result of our lean process, which is the next point we've been undergoing, as Councilmember Moore mentioned, a lean process or Kaizen or various other terms that are used to basically look at efficiencies that can be had. In government, I guess, we're not a for-profit enterprise, so rather than looking for profit, we're looking for added value to the customer, is what we're trying to find, a better experience for them that they can have by coming to City Hall and looking for, seeing what they need to do to get permits or whatever the case is that they need. So we're excited to, we've made several changes, and I'll be presenting to the council on the full list of these in the coming months for your information, and that's helped us a great deal. It's not helped with, you know, the, it's basically zeroing out what we've seen in increased permit volume and reduction in personnel, but it has been something that I'm, that I find rewarding in my line of work to find lost efficiencies and to provide that value back to the customer. And then next year, obviously, the last one is to continue with the numerous and complex projects. Not only do we have a lot of products that we work on, but Federal Way is a lot of, well, most of it is built out. So when we get a proposal, it's often a difficult site. If it is vacant, it's usually a difficult site because it hasn't been developed yet, so there's a wetland or a steep slope or some complexity with it that hasn't been built. Or it's a redevelopment of an existing site, which is a difficult, or it's going up, more intense densification, all of which deal with complexities that a lot of other cities that maybe aren't built out yet or maybe are on flat land or don't have as many lakes or the sound or, you know, we have a very diverse topography, but it also brings with that some difficulties in reviewing development permits. So I mentioned the schools, IRG, downtown redevelopments, and of course, sound transit is one that we are working closely with them on coming to the city. So this is the summary of our revenues and expenditures. This is on page C-31. I happen to go into detail if you want, but basically, like I said on the first slide, to meet the, to provide you a balanced budget, the Community Development Department eliminated a position and then is proposing to increase its fees by five percent. So with that, what we're proposing is an eight percent, eight-point-three percent reduction from previous year expenditures, and I am happy to answer any questions.
And I do want to say that ultimately, the goal of, again, why we took out from the Big Four over two-hundred-thousand dollars is so we could aggregate three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars for that two percent COLA. And so that's what the whole goal here has been, is to make sure not only do we not have to dip into strategic reserves, but that we siphon up enough to where we can make that commitment in the short term to our employees at a bare minimum two percent. Councilman Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, the most rewarding thing of being on the City Council is the fact that you begin to feel like your voice is being heard. It's taken me five years to talk about lean management and the benefits of it, and I think it's, there's value in that. You don't see it right away, but over time, you see it, and it does not hurt to implement it. It's uncomfortable to implement it, but it, there's benefits to come, not right away but down the road. And so, thank you. Because when you were being interviewed for your appointment, that's one thing that you and I talked about, and I appreciate what you said then, and I've appreciated the work that you've done. And so you have a very challenging department, and I know that we've had, I've talked to a lot of businesses, and I've heard concerns, you know, from timing, from start to finish and opening up doors, and I know there's challenges on both ends and whatnot. And so you and I met, I think, last week, and certainly appreciate the, your time in that. And so I know that we talked about plans and what we can do to improve that, and I appreciate that. I think you talked about potentially sound transit and the opportunities that comes from that, that'll help and support your Community Development Department. And so, and I really, the other, in addition to lean management and staffing, I'm also really impressed with the Blue Beam software. I'm really happy to hear another department that has it and is continuing to prepare to implement it. I think that's just another great efficiencies that just saves time, saves money. It's us being good stewards of public funds, so I appreciate that effort as well. So you're welcome to kind of elaborate more on what we can do to enhance the Community Development Department, but this is a big one, and I think Tim Johnson talked about this earlier. This is where we need to, I think, we need to put a lot of focus and time in because this is how you build a strong community, a vibrant community with a strong economy. And if we can have a Community Development Department that's meeting the demands, then it's easier for you to go to various places and pitch Federal Way. And so I think this is a serious place that we need to discuss, as a council, what else can we do to really address the problems? We know that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be producing a survey, a study of what needs to be improved, and I'd like to be proactive in that and be ahead of the curve on that through this budget. So with that, I will end my comment. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you very much. On your revenue and expenditure summary, where are human services, where the expenditures for human services located at?
Which page are you on, I'm sorry?
The revenue and expenditure summary?
So is this, is this C-31?
I have page 12, but...
Oh, of, okay, of the presentation.
Great.
Okay. And where is the revenue from human services?
Where's the expenditures for, how much are you spending on human services this year?
Okay. So the best place to look at that is the human services page within the budget, and I can go into detail, but if you look at the, if you look at the slide that you're referring to, the salaries and wages, benefits, supplies... referring to, the salaries and wages, benefits, supplies, and intergovernmental is a big chunk of that. It gets into more detail if you were to look at page C-41 of the budget document. That's exclusively human services. So, it's similar to what you see on the slide there, but it sort of filters out planning, building, and every other function of the department, and it's only for community services.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Sephardosson?
Thank you. So, same page 12. So, if you can tell us what intergovernmental is, because I don't know, and then why the huge change under the revenue for intergovernmental?
Okay. The question, if I understand, is why is the huge change in the intergovernmental line item of the revenue side of slide 12?
Correct.
Okay. Take that one. This has to do with our CDBG funding, and I'm going to ask Jeff to take that one.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. The large change is due to a couple of things. One, when the city became an entitlement community in 2012, one of the things that happened was there were funds that were essentially attributable to the city when the city was a joint agreement city with King County, and so, when the city became its own entitlement, those funds came over to the city in addition to the annual grant, and there were about, about, about $400,000, if I have that number correct, I'm not absolutely certain, but what that has meant is, over the years, we've been spending that money down, and in fact, this year, or for 2019, excuse me, we have about $100,000 of that left. So, so there's been a reduction there. In addition, and really, the larger part of that is the Section 108 loan and revenue attributable to that that has been spent down and used for the Performing Arts and Event Center, and so, of course, that revenue that came from the loan has disappeared. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. And then, on the same page, under expenditures, services and charges also have gone down, or are going to be projected to go down? If you can explain that to me as well?
My bad, if that's part of yours as well. Well, the, again, the expenditures include both CDBG as well as the Human Services General Fund, so you can see that the expenditures have gone down a little bit, but the revenue that we had coming in had already been accounted for in terms of how it was going to be expended, and so, this year, what you see is a combination of the annual CDBG grant along with the Human Services General Fund.
Okay. So, under expenditure, that's not governmental, but services and charges then for human services?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
So, my question was, under services and charges, for expenditures has gone down. So, are we talking about that line item, or did you just explain intergovernmental for me?
That, I was referring to that line item.
Services and charges?
Yes.
I see. So, then, what's the line item under that, which is intergovernmental? Is that something different than?
For intergovernmental?
Uh-huh.
Oh, intergovernmental are a couple of things. One, the city is responsible for providing funding to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency as part of a, I believe, an inter-local agreement, and honestly, for reasons I don't understand because it's been there a long time, that's been a part of the human services budget. So, that is, those are funds that we get billed for by the folks at the Clean Air Agency. In addition, the, the city has to pay a share of, I believe it's excise taxes, that come from the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city, and so, that, that payment comes out of there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Train.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I just want to compliment you for embracing this lean practice. As you know, I work for the government too, and we're not in the business of making money. We deliver service. But I can tell you that, in addition to what you share with us, that when you implement this lean, you improve the customer experience. But in my, my job, I can see actually, see the savings. Eight years ago, when my department cut in half because of the funding from the lawmakers, from 65 down to 33, I can tell you that this lean concept was partly responsible for me to be able to continue to provide the service to the resident in this city. People used to have to wait for three weeks for us to make a decision on their application for benefits. That was eight years ago. Now, with the 50% less staff, my staff can determine their eligibility within 60 minutes. Either we deny it, or we approve it. And like I said, lean was partially responsible for that. So, thank you for doing it, and I hope that all the department will follow you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could just add a comment. Certainly, there's a possibility that we could find additional savings as a result of lean practices. This particular experience, I felt it was important for the staff to be the ones who found the inefficiencies, and our facilitator agreed as well that if we were to proceed with the intent of finding something to cut, or a position to cut, that it would not be a successful process. Not to say that there, again, there couldn't be savings to be found, but if we were intending for this process to find someone, to lay off someone, there'd be zero support for this effort. So, if there are additional savings, which I believe there are, we've just talked about operational efficiencies to be found, I think, once we get this done, and we want to go to the next level of taking a hard look, and I'll, I'll speak somewhat freely here, we'll take a look at our code to see what exactly we need versus what we're just adding to the process. I've, there've been a couple instances where the original intent of the code to go through three signatures no longer applies, but to do, to provide a real analysis and justify to the public that that's no longer needed, that takes time and analysis to do so. So, if there are savings to be found, I think we're going to be adding value not only to the customer, but to our staff as well. You've heard time and again from other departments, and I don't, I don't need to belabor, but let me just briefly say that my department, I think, more than any, represents the focal point of some of the challenges that the city's facing in terms of staffing levels, workload, and compensation. So, I'll just say that if we, if we continue this, which I intend to do, the efficiencies, I think, also need to be shared with the employees as well because they are, they're overworked right now. The, I could go through any one of these, you know, the city planners, they don't do city planning, they're doing permits all day long. So, when we talk about the future of our city, we don't do a whole lot of planning.
No, I mean, I agree with you. The purpose of lean is not to reduce staff. The way we fight, we want to implement lean is because, number one, yes, there are potential saving, but the saving came from different forms.
Yeah.
It could be actual FTE saving, or the dollar saving, but the other thing is to help staff work smarter.
Yeah.
Not harder.
Yes, I agree.
So, in your case, when you have less staff, you need more, but you don't have the funding to, to hire more staff, help them to work smarter, to cut the step that, that we don't need. That is one way to help them meet the, you know...
I agree. I appreciate your comments. Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. You know, I know that you did a value stream where you posted on a whiteboard or some sort of wall the process it takes from start to finish, and I think having those type of conversations with staff, I think, was really valuable because then we could find where those inefficiencies are, like you stated earlier, and I think it's things like that that really helped make Fed Away a better place, I think, because, again, like you said, we're adding value to business owners and developers, and more importantly, citizens when they're trying to request for information. So, I think it's a good thing. When you did your training, and I think I asked you this question already, but I want to ask it on record, which is, was there like a staff member that really just, just really ran with it and kind of understood everything? I mean, is there, is it possible, I certainly don't want to tell you what to do, but that's not my job, but is it possible to find that staff member within and continue to empower that person to become an expert, so we have an expert lean in within City Hall?
Yes. So, not necessarily with lean, but particular to our process with the results that we've had, we've had several employees embrace it, and we've divided up into, you know, subtask committees to get things done. We're also going to have someone who's fully trained on Blue Beam. So, there's, there's different things that we have designated for certain employees to take on as part of, as part of implementing our lean process. But as far as a lean expert, yeah, you could say we're all experts now. I think it helped a lot to have a third-party facilitator there as well, just because if I go in there and I say, hey, you know, we're going to do this, then it's, you know, there's, there's less motivation. Not that I'm not a good motivator, but just, you know, in terms of finding, doing the lean process, it helps to have that third party.
Councilmember DuClos?
As the former executive director of a couple of agencies, as well as a head of many other programs when I worked for other agencies, I always found it much more beneficial to involve the staff in making decisions and recommending changes before lean existed and before zero-based budgeting even became a thing many moons ago ago. If you involve the people that work with you and for you, you will have a much better product in the end, and you will have buy-in by everybody, and that is the most important thing. If the staff buy into what you're doing, it becomes theirs, and then you're much, and then you're successful. Without that, you won't be successful.
Yep, that's exactly right. Thank you.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Brian, on your revenue and expenditure summary?
Yes.
Under total revenue, no, total expenditures, you have internal services, and it didn't exist in '16 or '17, it starts in '18. What is that?
Internal services.
It's on the very bottom, the last line.
$9,000. So, this is one of those things where I probably need to ask a day for, I provided him my FTE numbers, and he did the rest. I'm familiar with most, but this $9,000 line item, I'm not too sure what that represents.
Thank you.
I can, I can get an answer for you and email it to the council. Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Okay. Counsel, discussions or questions? Actually, why don't we wait until Deanie gets back? Let's give it a second because we already had citizen comment. We'll just wait a second.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure. Yes.
Stephanie, we can keep these folders for our next couple of days, and then Jerry Lynn will probably give them back to you.
We'll get back to you.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. If you want to leave them here on the desk, Stephanie can round them up, otherwise you could take them, take them with you. We'll just wait a second. Is there any other, while we're waiting for, while we wait?
Did anybody have a birthday?
I do want to say while we're waiting, Ryan, Chief Wong, and Brian, and Tim, all great, and obviously, we had a great presentation, but I'd like to say thank you for a great presentation today. You all did a great job. I'm sure if any member of the council has any questions during the course of this budget, they'll ask. And Councilmember DuClos, we wanted to wait till you get back before we adjourned because we have a section on our agenda for council discussions and questions, but before we adjourned, out of respect, we wanted to see if you had any questions, comments, anything for the good of the order.
I think it's been a wonderful experience, and we've had a lot of discussion and conversation with people.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been asking you a lot.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
There will be a time when I miss Councilmember DuClos. You know, I have to say, Mr. Mayor, I, I am, I find myself pleased with the budget, but I also find myself desiring for some modifications, and of course, hopefully, the council will be on board with that. Maybe so, maybe not, but we'll see in this process. But I think as I sit back, it's, I'm pleased with, I'm pleased with the fact that I'm seeing innovation, and I'm hearing a lot more about departments implementing software that, again, just enhances efficiencies. And I see other departments that are desiring for that, which I hope to get into this budget because I see a lot of value in that, and I know that that part's going to be a huge, will be a harder conversation to have. And so, I'm impressed with that, and I'm impressed with all the department heads and their reports, and they're making time to meet with me. I know I'm looking forward to meeting with John Hutton and others to dig a little bit, continue digging deeper to make sure I fully understand everything, but youth programming is going to be really important for me. Efficiencies, enhancing those are going to be really important, and continuing to invest in technology that promotes green, that promotes environmental protections, I think is going to be really important via less paper, as an example. And so, and of course, something I've been advocating that you might have heard for the first time tonight, financial dashboards. I see a value in that. I think they're really, really important, and, and I think it's time that we also get on with the 21st century, just like other departments are. So, with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I want to also say thank you to the directors that presented yesterday and today. Learned a lot, and the level of depth is noticed that you provided in your budget, so really appreciate that. One of the things that comes to mind for me is kind of, and something that a couple departments have done, is the internal pipeline development and like the leadership development of our folks that have been here at the city, and I think that, you know, a prime example is EJ, and seeing him kind of come to the director status and continuing to provide incentive for our staff to be promoted within, and so, we don't have to re-recruit and rehire. And as somebody that works currently in the school district and HR, I know kind of how difficult that is and the strategic process that goes behind that, so I think whatever we can do to continue to help the folks that are, that are here already, so we don't have to, to do that. And I also agree with Councilmember Moore in terms of youth programming. I've talked about it, and I think that it's something that, as a council, we're going to have to make some tough choices in terms of revenue, and Councilmember DuClos has stated that, so I'm... so I'm excited about that opportunity the next time we meet for that, and look forward to getting the word out. But I can just foresee some tough decisions ahead in terms of revenue. So, with that, I'll conclude, and again, thank you to the directors.
All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That's for the, what's that? Did you want, did you have anything? Councilmember Trent?
I just want to thank you to all the directors and managers who presented the proposed budget. This is my learning experience. I still learn, and I will have some comments and suggestions after all the department present their proposed budget. So, I'm going to save that for October 2nd. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.